Hammond City Council, public hearing agenda, July 22nd, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Oh, business item number one.
Review and consider override of mayor's veto of line items in the budget ordinance. Mayor Penpito. Line item veto statement for ordinance number five, two-five dash five-seven-six-eight. Um, which one is this? Item number nineteen. How do we want to read this?
Have to read them all, huh?
Just go, just go from the first one.
I don't know which one is the first one, because I don't have it on a particular order.
Yeah, so we'll go, uh, just go by the first one you have.
Nineteen? All right. So, the mayor is exercising his line item veto authority to remove item number nineteen from the FY twenty-six budget. The item moved up sewer improvements for Monastery Lane planned for FY twenty-eight, adding four-hundred-and-fifty thousand in expenses to the FY twenty-four budget.
This one was moved up from twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-eight to twenty-twenty-six, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Uh, when we started these budgets, um, there was five million dollars added to it, the original budget. So, we have a lot on the, uh, on the plate for, um, infrastructure to do with the budget and other things as well. So, um, we may not get all of the things that are on this budget this year done. Well, as we have the money, we'll get it done. If we don't have the money, we won't get it done. So, as far as this one goes, we have a five-year outlay plan, um, where we put things in order of, uh, priorities. And this one, once again, was twenty-twenty-eight moved up to this next fiscal year, this fiscal year. It was an amount of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
You might want to take public comment one more, maybe easier to manage.
Anyone have any comments they would like to make on this particular item? Please step to the mic and give your name and city, and you have three minutes.
My name is Kent Hawkins. I reside at one-thirty Alida Street in Hammond. I moved to that residence in nineteen ninety-nine. At that time, Hammond had not taken in that district, part of that area. Since being there, and Hammond has come in and taken over the sewer and the water and the garbage pickup. Mayor Foster was able to start some, some good, uh, projects in there. But, as far as the Monastery Lane, it, it all tie, kind of ties together because we have so much flooding issues down that street. Uh, if I, if a heavy rain comes into that area, I have to keep my home from flooding. I have to open my cleanout valve near the street. I have no choice. Uh, it was a gravity-fed line. I think the pumps have been initiated a little bit. But the other thing I'd like you to consider is, you're also have tied in the sewer for that Brown's Dairy. And that was not originally in there when I moved into that Pine Hill subdivision. I know, and the other thing I'd like you to consider is there is a lot of building going on. They've added at least twenty-five, thirty new units to the back end, the south end of Alida Street, on the back end. There is some new land that is up for sale, uh, from the old Nicolosi Farm, and that's going to get added to. I understand the twenty-twenty-eight, but if you, I would really encourage you as council members to remember that, I know we, that area got folded in late. I understand that. But it's been twenty, it's been over twenty years. So, and we really do need the infrastructure, the help that you can provide for us back there on the Monastery and Alida. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Step to the mic, give your name and city, please.
So, this also includes the, uh...
Name and city.
Okay, sorry, Terry Crapinsana, uh, one-oh-four Gwendland Drive, Hammond, Louisiana.
Thank you.
So, this also includes the Pine Hill Forest subdivision?
Yes, well, this, there's a few of them, Mr. Terry. This one is, uh, the sewer, uh, that actually, it's been on books for a long time, the sewer, and keeps getting pushed back. That's why it was pushed up. So, this is a sewer. There is no sewer, uh, the city doesn't have a sewer, uh, ran that way, so they can't connect if they wanted to, um, in, in that area on Monastery. Later on there, there will be the Alida issue. That, that was the drainage, uh, capital outlay, uh, project that was, that was put on there for Alida, the drainage. So, there is another later veto. It was veto, and this project was supplying, uh, sewage, um, connections, um, and running it, because it doesn't run that, that far west of the city. So, where the residents could tie into the city if they wanted to, or anybody else could, that's wanting to build or develop over there, they would have that. Um, and then later on, there's a drainage, um, issue that came up with trying to get the drainage and finished out on Alida that we started on the backside, um, and working our way up, so we can get the road repaved afterwards. So, this is the sewage.
Should I make my comment on the Alida now, or wait till that line item veto comes?
Wait till the next line item. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else on item nineteen?
Next item.
Mayor is exercising his line veto, line item veto authority to remove item number twenty-three from FY twenty-six budget. The item added a sidewalk project to Haskins, Haskins Alley between West Louisa, West Louisa West Street and White Street, adding forty-six thousand dollars in expenses to FY twenty-six budget.
Once again, this was an added addendum item to the original budget.
Anyone on item number twenty-three?
Yeah, this is in District Three. So, do I talk about it now, or do I talk about it later? That's the question.
Public hearing.
Okay. Explain to me why forty-six thousand dollars was a sidewalk? That, in District Three, the community, our transportation is walking in District Three. And, we have veterans over there with electric wheelchairs. We have retired people from the city with electric wheelchairs. So, explain to me how this piece of sidewalk, forty-six thousand dollars, was cut out the budget?
Once again, you added three million dollars to the original budget. The gentleman with the wheelchair, apparently we took care of his street and his sidewalk. It's additional forty-five thousand that, as I said earlier, there are items on the budget now that may not get done this fiscal, fiscal year.
Okay. Now, let's go back. That forty, forty-five thousand, I think what you're talking about, was from Third Street to Second Avenue. Am I right? I know I'm right, I just want to hear what y'all have to say.
If it's on there, it says sidewalk project, oh, that's...
Yeah, well, let me explain it to you while y'all look it up. They actually wanted a sidewalk from Phoenix Avenue all the way to Second Avenue. So, but, I guess the engineer decided he want to do a piece of sidewalk from Second Avenue to Third Avenue. So, that's why that was moved, because that wasn't what the community asked for. And so, I still need to get, I, I would like to get a reason why this was cut out the budget.
Because it was an add-on to the budget. Three million dollars you added on to the budget, as it was presented to you. We don't need these add-ons, but it's not going to get done. Unless you all override this veto, this is not going to get done. This fiscal year can possibly get done, next fiscal year, but this particular fiscal year, it's not going to get done.
Yeah. Okay, that's it for right now.
Well, I was going to comment later, but I just want to make it clear, because that passed on the sewer. That sewer, that's been on there for a long time. So, I know how he's portraying it as being that it, it cut from twenty-eight to now, but the sewer's been on the books, and it keeps getting pushed back every year. And so, therefore, that's why it was moved up now. And we had two budget work session meetings that we went through, and we, and we went back and forth, did everything, and kind of had it all set up to where it all fit pretty much. At the end of the day, when we voted all these in, they all, the budget was in line, and there was money to take care of everything, and there was not over, overextending the budget to where we didn't have enough money that was coming in for the project, just like we do every year. We had two work, two work sessions on there. That's been there twenty-plus year, they've been waiting on the sewer over there. So, it didn't just cut in line, they've waited twenty-some years over there to, to get the sewer ran over there. And then, there's projects that were put on the books. The last minute after all the meetings, there was, there was projects that the mayor put on there, that was last, in the last minute or not, that just got on there. So, I mean, I don't think twenty years is, is, is too much to ask, when there's money. If there wasn't money there, then yeah, I understand that, that's no, no issue there. But, it keeps getting pushed back, and that was the reason why it got, got moved up, because it's been there for a long time, so, and it's sewer. So, it's not like we're talking about, you know, I mean, there's a sidewalk that got in there for a hundred-and-fifty, sixty thousand dollars, about a canal behind the rec center, and nobody, you know, six foot wide. So, that got in there, we, we, you know, we, we let him have his, you know, sidewalk going to the back, where, you know, that doesn't connect really anything but a railroad track. Um, so, I mean, you know, I think sewer come, you know, it's pretty important, and then for future developments for anybody, and also for any of the, any of the ones that want to connect to it, that, that don't have the option to now, it would also have more sewer accounts paying into the sewer system. So, um, so anyway, so that was, that was me touching on that sewer comment later. I was going to comment later on in the meeting, but, um, we can comment individually, I guess, on, when they come up.
As you said, it is sewer. Sewer that hadn't been there for years. Sewer that they have lift stations in the back of their homes, all in water separation type sewer tanks. Alida is not a part of that. They're there, that, next to you, but that isn't tied into your sewer. When Mason was here, and I was with Mason, we went in and we redid all of the sewer lines in that neighborhood. Uh, we, we, we went from, we, we took away the, they had a lift, they had a actual tank there from Mo-Dad, and then the city came in to do that. The milk station runs directly to the plant now, along with North Oaks Hospital. It does, it is not tied in with yours, it runs a direct main to the plant, uh, which is a separate pond at the pan, at the plant. It's an old pond that we rehabilitated strictly for North Oaks, um, Hospital and that Brown's Velvet, uh, Milk Plant.
And, and once again, that was all parish, it was annexed into the city. So, therefore, they are on private septic, because they were in the parish. Now, they're in the city, and they've been in the city for twenty-plus years. So, therefore, you, you know, usually, you practice is, you eventually give the, the people that are in the city, uh, availability to, to tie into, um, your city utility system. So, that's, that's, that's where that comes from. But yes, yeah, they do have septic tanks, but eventually, um, I'm sure they would like to tie into the city services, since they have been in the city since twenty-plus years, paying taxes, and, uh, they agreed to the deal whenever they took in Winn-Dixie Warehouse to get them in there. And so, that was the deal. And so, therefore, uh, it never, it never really fully finished, and it's, you know, anything in that little area right over there. So, um, so that, that's, that's touching base on that again, so...
So, let me ask a question on this here. So, when we annex stuff into the city limits, what all do the city offer the people when we annexing property, homes into the city limits?
Usually folks that get annexed in want water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Okay, because I see something on here that's going to come, it's in District Three, and, and it's amazing, because I'm talking about, I tell what that is, about Chapel Peeler Park, and I want to see exactly how we're going to handle this project, and here we talking about something that's going on twenty years. Honestly, we shouldn't even be talking about this here. This should have been, twenty-year project should override everything. This should be taken care of. If I got sewer issues, let's take care of the sewer right now. So, how could we annex something into the city? And I know it wasn't doing your watch, and it wasn't doing my watch, but it's time for us to start cleaning up this stuff. So, we can't, and I agree with all councilmen saying, you know, we have this stuff on the book, and that's what a lot of people don't understand. And it's a five-year project, but in the meantime, it keep getting put back. It keep, and every time you put it back, nine times out of ten, it going to fall off the book. And so, that's why it don't matter who it is or what it is, I'm going to do everything that I can fight to help anybody that I can out, and I let it be known, it don't matter what color you are. If you're right, you're right. If you're wrong, you're wrong. And I don't care who you are, and this not even in my district. But, if we the city councilmen, keep letting stuff like this take place, and I knew we were going to have to deal with a lot of vetoes, but this the same mayor sat up here, and his sidekick Charles, sit there and say, "If y'all pass the garbage, I'm going to give y'all what y'all want." Yeah? I know it's funny, but it's sad. No, 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 let me talk. We ain't going to play this game. We ain't going to play this game. So, all the while you kept pushing the issue, we need to accept this garbage, which this something that the mayor did on his own, that we dealt with, with the last election and stuff, and here it is. Now, we just now accepting the garbage, not me, because I'm not going to accept nothing that's not right. But the same city councilman sat up here and voted for this, and stuff, for you, they voted for the garbage and the sewer, and this what Charles was saying, so, we're not going to sit here and say who was lying, because you can always go back to the meeting. That's what I love about this here place here. Whatever you say, twenty years, thirty years from now, it never go away. So, we're going to do something, because I don't need no clowns speaking while I'm saying nothing. So, let's get this here straight right now, please. Because if you do, if you do it now, you going to keep doing it later on, and nobody going to tell me when to talk and when not to talk. So, watch yourself, sir, and everybody know who we talking about, but...
Sir, are you addressing me? Because we're not supposed to address people. No, I mean, he's not just calling me a clown in front of everybody, because I said amen in the Greek he said?
So, am I going to deal with these interruptions?
No, he's the one that did it.
Am I going to deal with these?
He ain't on time. Stay on time.
So, look, look like this meeting going to be canceled the way y'all going.
Look like you getting outvoted.
Okay, well, we do have a problem, Mr. Mayor, and you asked for the garbage to be passed. A mistake that you made, uh, President Kip, I don't know if you hear, I'm starting hearing something that's, I'm being called out my name on this hillside. So, I know we got police present, either the police going to do their job, because we do know, we're going by the robber rules of order, a person can be escorted out of here, just like I can be escorted out of here, they can be escorted out here. So, let's, so we probably need to remind them of what's going on, because we just getting started, and I don't need my pressure to go up. I don't take no medicine or nothing else, and I'm not going to start. But, I do want to be able to see what we can do about the vetoes, because what sense do it make for us to sit through two meetings?
Three.
Three. Two meetings, and do all this here talking, and yet we get to this here point, it going to be vetoed, which I knew something going to get vetoed in District Three, because I'm always going to speak up for the district. But, we definitely need this sidewalk. Uh, I think when we voted on it, it was four votes, so, I would like to get those same votes on this here, but if not, I, I respect everybody on how they vote. Thank you so much.
Item twenty-nine?
Item twenty-nine. The mayor is exercising his line item veto authority to remove item number twenty-nine from the FY twenty-six budget. This item added a sidewalk project for Blackburn Road between Marley Drive and Pecan Street, adding forty-five thousand dollars in expenses to the FY twenty-six budget.
This is another item that was added on after the budget. Also, another item as the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Monastery Lane, that can easily be done next fiscal year. This particular item, um, this council, councilman had put two million dollars on top of the budget, from, uh, the original budget. So, we're just trying to keep things within the budget. The money's there. On these other items, we're going to probably be surprised that there will be items on this capital outlay budget that may not get done this fiscal year, depending on revenues, sales tax revenues.
And this one right here came from, wasn't, it stated as it got added on, but this was a project that was a phase two, and it was phase one started, and it was done, and it missed a year, and then I realized that it wasn't even on there, and it was supposed to be done in two phases. They did already the sidewalk from, um, church to, uh, cotton, and then they were supposed to pick up from cotton over the river tracks to Blackburn, well Blackburn to, uh, Pecan. And then, so I realized it wasn't on there, so it's just a sidewalk going to the, to the, uh, railroad track. Then I met with the engineer, and he said, "We'll just start," we discussing, and he said, "We'll just start on the other side, try to connect with the other sidewalk." So, that was a project that wasn't, it was actually left off, uh, without even, you know, anyone talking to me about it, or explaining why, or what, what happened to it. And so, that's where that, that got on, because sometimes, you talk about these meetings, you have it on there, you have all these meetings, and then administration picks and chooses what they leave on there or not, and then, especially if it's not that year, and then it just lost in the pipeline. And so, that's, that's where this was a finish in a phase of, of that. But, at the end of the day, you know, to me, priorities come sewer and drainage. So, this would never been put on there, if there weren't money on there, that we already went back and forth and went through all kind of line items and everything, and amendments, and it all fit in with the budget, and it was just to finish out another phase. And, you know, the council voted in support of that, majority of the council, I appreciate their support, and, uh, you know, and, and that's, that's where this was. This just didn't come out of nowhere, so, thank you.
This is a piecemeal item. This item really needs to be put on from Marley all the way to North Morrison Boulevard. This is a, this is a very short distance from Marley to Pecan. Next fiscal year, hopefully we can put it on from Marley to North Morrison Boulevard.
Is there anyone else here on item number thirty? Number thirty-nine?
No, we're on number thirty.
Thirty.
We're on thirty.
Oh, thirty?
Thirty.
Item thirty.
The mayor is exercising his line item veto authority to remove item number thirty from the FY twenty-six budget. This item moved up a drainage project for Elida Drive from FY twenty-seven, adding three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars in expenses to, at the FY twenty-six budget.
Once again, two million dollars has been added to that, this year's budget in this district. Three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars can be easily done next fiscal year. This was originally done for fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven.
And this is the, the drainage project on Alida, and, uh, what's going on over there is, is that, when I first got in, we went in and started working on the back, getting Tammy, Brenda all the back. This was the last phase coming in. Well, the roads have gotten so bad over there because of drainage on Alida, that there's potholes everywhere, it's fallen collapses. I've had several meetings with the engineer about all that, you know, trying to get the road reassembled, this and that, and, you know, there's drainage problems. So, talked to the city engineer, several meetings going on with that. I know y'all don't see anything over there sometimes, because it takes so long to get anything done with this administration, because they usually put that on the last back burner. So, all this stuff that keeps getting put on, because they don't care about, all this stuff that keeps getting put on, it's been on the books for twenty-plus years. So, this wasn't just today that we came up with it. So, anyways, going back to the fact, we can't get the road replaced until the drainage is completely fixed, or we can come back with the road. So, right now, we're talking, we're talking two years out for the road, at least, because you got to do the project. So, this is a, this is something that you got to do to drainage before you do the road. And so, if it keeps, if it's next year, the year after, or not, then it's another year or so for the road. So, therefore, the drainage needs to be done, so where we can get the road replaced, because there's more than enough potholes, and it was washed out. Tina Drive was so washed out, and I started back there, because I was assuming, you know, it was a little one, the city could get it done. We found the money to get that done, because it was washed out, even though they didn't have as many people down it, because the main drag, but I figured we can work away from there back, because the drainage is already put in over there on Tina. So, that's where this came from. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't something that was a last-minute deal, it's been there, and we were, I was trying to push it up, because this doesn't happen overnight, even if it get approved, it might be the last project that's done in the contractor group, so it might be a year out before they even start it, then you talking about another year for that. So, you could be two to three years out by the time you get the road put in. And, that's, that's where this comes from, right here, with the drainage. So, anyone that's talked about that, they can now. Thank you.
Just step back to the mic, sir, and just give your name and city again, please.
Terry Crapinsana, one-oh-four Gwendland Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-oh-four-oh-three. I have lived in this neighborhood since nineteen eighty, when I built my house back there, we were not in the city limits. I know I have other people in my subdivision here tonight. Uh, if anybody has lived in that neighborhood longer than I have, I'd like to meet you, because I think I have been back there the longest. I've seen a lot of changes in my neighborhood. Somebody mentioned a while ago that when we were annexing to the city, because of Winn-Dixie, we agreed to something. I don't remember agreeing to anything. I think I was just told, "You're being annexed into the city, because we want Winn-Dixie tax dollars." So, I have paid my taxes, I have paid my property taxes, and I have seen very little from the city in all of these years. Uh, I always felt I was safe from flooding, living back where I did. That's why I've never had the desire to move. Uh, in twenty sixteen, our neighborhood flooded from the twenty sixteen flood. Three years ago, our neighborhood flooded from Ida. It was real close to my house three years ago. In fact, my neighbor flooded, and I was, had water on my slab patio. I was about four inches from into my house. From what I'm understanding, the money for this project has already been allocated, and the council approved it on a vote of four to one. But, now the mayor is choosing to do the line item veto. I'm not really understanding how all this works, but gentlemen, I can tell you this. If at the end of the month, I have an extra five-hundred dollars to blow, I can't spend a thousand. Thank you.
Anyone else on number thirty?
Kent Hawkins, one-three-zero, Alida Street, Hammond. Just, I apologize earlier for not misunderstanding your line, how your system works. To back... To back up what Mr. Crapinsano said, the, the flooding is, is really bad in that neighborhood. This last weekend, where they were threatening 10 inches of rain on Bullseye, again, I have to come to my, the edge of my street, open that drain, clean out valve, so I, it just doesn't come into my home. And I'm on the very corner where all the water comes down. It is an eight-foot drop from 190 to my house, to the corner lot where I live. My house collects all the water right there. It has nowhere else to go, except on that corner. So, I'm, I'm pleading that you consider this drainage project, because we are in, we are in desperate help, desperate need for some help. Thank you.
Hi, Robin Taylor, 116 Elida Street. My house has flooded. The seams in my house are splitting. I cannot afford a new home, and I cannot afford to move, and I cannot afford it to flood again. So, I'm asking y'all, please, please, come, at least, put it on the books, so they can do the sewer, so at least we won't have water backing up in our house. We shouldn't have to leave our home. I don't know about y'all, I don't know where y'all live, but when it rains, you shouldn't have to worry, where, where are we going now?
Anyone else?
My name is Patty Crop, I live at 122 Elida. I moved there in 2015, thinking it was gonna be my forever home. In 2016, I had two feet of water in my house. I had sewer running through my house. There were snakes in my house. We had to take all of, it took a year to get my house back in order. And we thought, okay, everybody said it was a fluke. Never lived in the South before, they, when we bought the house, they told us it'll never flood. Guess what, Ida came along, and I flooded again. So, I've been in my house for 10 years, and flooded, had to rebuild it twice. It's scary, it's horrible. I've lived more in an RV outside of my house than anything, because of the time it took to rebuild. I'm too old to do it again, you know, I vote. If you've never been through it, you'll never know what it's like, but it's not pleasant. Please, fix our drainage.
Anyone else?
Just wanna say, there's other people in here in that neighborhood, some may not feel comfortable talking, some may not. There's also some, some people that have reached out to me, couldn't make it tonight, due to either illnesses, or other conflicts, or surgeries, and that they all, you know, wanted me to express their, you know, their concerns about the drainage, and then sewer, and make sure that, you know, the drainage is really, you know, taken seriously, and hopefully that, you know, council will support the drainage project moving up. And then some were concerned about the roads as well, which they want them both done, but we can't do one before the other, and this needs to be done first. So, they wanted me to reach out, some maybe sending emails, not too sure if they got to it or not. But anyway, just wanted to state that as well. Thank you.
And I'd like to say this here, based on that, I'm willing to take Louisa West off, just to get these people what they need. So, you hear this from me, because the lady sit there and says she had to redo everything two times. I never had to redo nothing, never. So, I'm willing to take Louisa West and White Street off, just to save this lady. So, I don't care about doing that. So, I will do that. I don't really want to, ma'am, but hearing your story, I don't have no problem doing it whatsoever. So, you can put my project off to next year, but I would love for her project to move forward this year. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Mike Fennell, I live at 120 Elida Street. I've been there 15 years, and when we first moved in, they did have the drainage project come through, and they fixed some stuff up, but I have, personally, haven't had any problems, because my house is a little bit raised, but I've had all my neighbors flood several times since then. And, you know, it's, my heart goes out to them, so if there's something I can do to push for this project to get completed, you know, I'm here to help, try to persuade you guys. I also reached out to the parish before about getting the street repaved, and they said, oh no, that's city limits, that's, city's gotta repave that street, and that was years ago. And so, I got with the city, and the city's like, oh no, that's parish, parish has to come through there. They do, they do the more heavier construction projects. So, I mean, it's been, it's been in talks about getting the street repaved, and if they have to do the drainage first, the sooner we can get that done, the better. Now, when the time comes, and it's, and if it is pushed back, then if it is, we need to have guarantee that it will get done when it was scheduled in 2027. But no matter what, this project needs to be completed.
I appreciate, I'm glad you said that, too, because you're not the only one. I've gotten a runaround for several years about the kick around from the parish doing the road, and the city doing the road. That's why I put it on our, our deal, because for the longest, it's been the parish does asphalt, and the city does the concrete. And so, therefore, I kept getting runaround, so I talked to them, and then the parish said, that's y'all's problem, you know, and then everything, it kept going back and forth, so that's when I got the money to do the back on Tina Drive repave. They already had the drainage done, and then, so then I tried to start moving up the drainage and everything to get the road. So, you're not the only one that got kicked back, because it was the same thing I was dealing with for four or five years with that road. And then, so here we are now, today, with that. So, it, it's, it's been a mystery, but they didn't want to do it for some odd reason, but hopefully, we can get this done, you know, for y'all.
Yeah, yeah, and once we saw the back streets get done, that back, I kept expecting Elida Street to get repaved, but it never did, and that's what made me look into it. So, I went back looking through my emails, and I think it was 2018 I reached out, and 2020 I reached out again. Then back in April of this year, I sent another email to the parish, but I didn't get any response from them.
Yeah. That one was washed out, and it was easier to get the $40,000 to do that, and had the drainage already. So, I said, well, better to get something done right now, and that was hopefully tying into Elida. And then the drainage came about as well, you know, that been, kept being pushed off, so, that's kind of where that went. But yeah, I know it was kind of weird, you said that, you know, the back was done, the front, but the whole plan was to kind of tie in and come on, because it was a little more money to get Elida done. And so, that was the story behind that one, yeah.
So, just to say-
Mike, that drainage ditch that's by Monaster, that tributary, that's where everything drains. Right? So, when you have these three and four and five two-inch floods, until that tributary drains, nothing in that neighborhood is gonna go down. So, the terrain itself is an issue. If you have the underground versus the ditches that we have at the moment, you're still gonna have, it's actually gonna be a little lower than the ditch slightly. It needs to drain to that tributary, until it recedes and goes down. Will that neighborhood drain?
Is the project to get that completed in the books anywhere?
To get what completed?
The tributary cleaned out?
That's underneath-
They've cleaned a, a lot of them, I don't know if Colley Bates and the parish have cleaned that one, but I assume they, they did, because that one, if I'm not mistaken, runs all the way from south.
So, that goes back to the parish as well?
No, that's under the drainage board, I've been on that one, too, for years. That's the drainage board, not the parish, I've been told them several times. Colley said that they cleaned it out already. So, it supposedly cleaned out, but it's not just that one. If the front's not working, and the back's, and the back's working, or vice versa, anything in that area, drainage-wise improvement, that's getting that water out of there, is gonna help everybody's houses from not flooding. And the water sitting on the road, and the reason why the road's getting so bad, because there's no drainage in the front working right. So, therefore, water sitting there, and it's rotting out the road, and just making it dissolve. So, that's the story behind that. You can sit up there and make it sound all pretty about the back canal filling up, it's nothing to do with that. The, the, the road does not drain properly right now, it never did, it never has. It started improving the back, because they started doing the drainage. So, the road is getting worse and worse because of the drainage. So, drainage board, already talked to them several times, they supposedly cleaned it. There's a couple in that backup that I think you back up to it, you back up to on your side. I think Mr. Chuck and his wife, Ms. Patty backs up to it. They may be able to see if, if y'all seen them clean it out, because they told me they did. Okay, yeah. So, that's the drainage board, yeah. So, both helps each. If it was cleaned out, and the front drainage was installed properly, then there wouldn't be any flooding over there.
Well, I'm just urging you all to get it, get it done. You know, if you can't get it done this year, then definitely next year. And if not, you know, we'll be back in the same situation, pushing, pushing for this project.
Although, the money's there, so, thank you. You got to say anything else, Kent, about that drainage, real quick?
Kent Hawkins, 130 Elida Street, Hammond. The area of land between Monaster Lane and Elida, I don't know who owns it. I know behind me, to the east of my property, the sheriff's department owns that, because the old man, oh, pet, oh, shoot. The old man died.
Renee, no.
Renee, Renee Pets, that's it. He died, and that area got turned over to sheriff's department. That, it, I know that, that's where that old pond, waste pond, but the ditches that go back into that canal, they're, they're that small, they're as big as that rug, or even smaller. So, there's nowhere, and that water comes down south on Elida Street. It makes a hard left back east, and then it goes back north against my property, that nobody maintains. Now, I did, I, the, the parish did come in and clean out the ditch directly behind my house, for a little, as far as they could. But I've heard residents that have been in there long, like Terry, they, they have been there, and they talk, this one man who grew up in that neighborhood as a boy, directly behind his house, he said, there was a ditch there, and Joe Nicolosi talked about a ditch being it. Well, there's no ditch behind Patty's house, but between, you know, Chuck and Patty's house, and there used to be, because nobody can maintain that property, it's just overgrown, and the hurricane made it much worse. So, I'll let you go.
Thank you.
39?
The mayor is exercising line item veto authority to remove item number 39 from the FY26 budget. This item added unspecified improvements for Jackson Park, adding $25,000 in expenses to the FY26 budget.
This was another add-on. No other council member in their parks decided to receive any money. At the last minute, $25,000 was added to this park. There is $30,000 in there now.
And just a comment on that, you really can't do much with the $30,000 that's in there, and so therefore, he was trying to budget some more in that, that fund, to where you may, you know, could kind of get a project done for that neighborhood, that, that kind of has, you know, they, they have, some of the kids look for things to do, so that, that's kind of where that was. It's, is it, is it a dire need, you know, everything I ask for, you know, there's a need for it. But that, that's kind of where it was, and there's a lot of years, you know, it sounds like a lot of years, that park didn't get any money for several years, and, and so therefore, $25,000 to a $55 million-plus budget. I mean, you know, it's kind of, it's $25,000, but that didn't make or break it, and there was money there when we did all these, and settled it to where it wouldn't go over. And so, that's a little explain that, that issue right there, and, and, you know, some parks get hundreds, two hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, some, some districts have three parks in them, some have two, some, I got one. So, that's kind of where that was, but like I said, drainage and sewer always, always comes first. And that, that was where that, that, that 25 came from, so, thank you.
Once again, the budget is assumed that we're gonna make the tax dollars that we made the year prior, or at least the hope is. So, to say the money is there, it is not there until it's received through sales tax dollars. So, until we receive the money, will we do any of these projects? And that's how this will move on.
That sounds good.
Once again, $5 million was added to the original budget presented. It's gonna be very tough to do what we have on the budget.
That sounds good, but we do this every year the same way. We, we do the budgets the same way, we didn't change or modify anything.
We've never-
We, we budget it, and then we go off of projections that we do. So, it, it sounds, it's the same thing we do every year, none, nothing's changed, so.
Anyone else on this item?
Just want to ask, if these all stand, what is the, the balance in the fund balance? Do we know that?
Is this done at the moment?
No, I'm sorry.
Still paying construction?
No, I'm talking-
This last fiscal year?
Right, so, to, to be clear, what, what the mayor's saying is, we, we have never done this much in projected sales tax that we've been up here. So, we have inflated the budget, in my opinion, by saying we're gonna get more sales tax dollars than we are. We've added quite a bit of capital projects, added things, moved up things. That budget passed, and then he's vetoed it to bring it back to a fiscally sound position. What I'm asking is, what is the amount of all these vetoes stand? Because there should be some cushion, and it's very little to no cushion as it stood what we passed.
Wasn't it like 600 and some thousand dollars, I think, wasn't it about 600,000 roughly?
Like 160 that was left at the end of the budget with what we passed.
I think it was- No, I think she's going off of the projection that-
A million dollars, but I know we're paying out a million dollars on past capital outlay projects that we're finishing up at the moment. Tight budget, along with paying half a million dollars every two weeks, plus, just to fund the city and keep us moving and working, and everybody doing their jobs.
I think she was asking about what was the balance of the projection of exactly, when we went through all the budget work sessions, when we got all these approved by the council to go forward, before you vetoed it, or tried to veto it, that there was a number there, that was a rough balance we're working on. So, we weren't, we weren't in the red, we weren't in the red, we were, we were good.
The general fund and the sales tax fund always have to be in the black. We passed a budget that was in the black with very little money of a cushion, of about 160. These vetoes bring us back to probably close to a million of a cushion on an inflated budget. Again, on an inflated budget, so.
Yeah, I think, if I could respond to the question, so, we, we had projected a maximum revenue. I think we added another million dollars in revenue, which was like, if, if everything comes in, and we have another really good sales tax year, we could see, you know, an extra million dollars in revenue. But if you recall back to the original presentation of the budget back on May 13th, the subsequent council meeting and budget work session, you know, we were trying to keep our budget around 29.5 million. That's, that's sort of where we've been the last several years. That's what we felt comfortable forecasting as a budget, in terms of sales tax revenues. So, at one point, I think we had, we had closed in on 30, or maybe, maybe even 30.5 million, which, which is a, a very much less conservative estimate of revenues. The other thing that happened at the council meeting where the budget was approved is that there was a grace period of two months extended for the additional revenues that would come from water and sewer and garbage collection fees. That means that those revenues probably won't be realized until October or November, because the grace period would end at the end of September. And we're currently paying around $180,000 a month for garbage alone. So, that had to come into factor when the mayor was considering the vetoes.
And, and the, and the $5 million, that's where it started, but there were cuts that were made throughout that time when we met two, two meetings, budget work session meetings, and it's always done projections. They didn't even have, I think, a couple of million left on it, they're gonna be coming in in the next couple of months, how they do it. So, the money's there, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have, as a council, at least, I'm speaking for myself, I mean, I, I don't think any of us would have approved a majority of, of a budget proposed that was gonna go in the black, and not, not, not budgeted out with all these, these approved deals. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of how, where that's at on there, so.
So, Charles, you said 180,000 a month going towards garbage, right?
That's about correct, yes.
Okay. But the councilmen's approved of it, that 180,000, so this just got, they just voted on this, what, two weeks, a month ago?
Are you talking about the- Are you talking about the revenue increase?
Yeah, no, yes, improving the garbage.
Correct. What I was saying is, we're spending about $180,000 on garbage a month. The revenue that we'll see, the additional revenue that we see because of the 60-day grace period, which will end at the end of September, we won't recognize revenue from garbage collection until probably October or November. So we're talking about almost an entire quarter where we don't see that additional revenue. So that was a factor in consideration when the mayor was looking at the vetoes.
Okay. So we got five districts here, and only two districts we got vetoed. So I'm a little lost. And in District Three, the engineer never even met with me. So if I asked something, if I asked for something today, or even last week, by the engineer, by the mayor, you, none of y'all had never even met with me this year to see what was needed and what wasn't needed in District Three. So that's a problem there. So anything that I asked for yesterday or last night, nobody even met with me to see what was needed in the area. But we got five districts. That's what I understand. And Councilman Kip, he pushed the issue a whole lot about working together, and he was the first one to cut something in his district. And so if he cut something in his district, and he was the first one to talk to me about getting something cut in the district, and if y'all are not aware of it, you had $500,000 going on a third road on Coleman Street. That shouldn't have never even been done, and we never even discussed it. So.
You have five districts.
Yes.
You have well over 3 million in your district. You have well over two in Sam's district. You have, I don't think you have 100, I mean, a million in Kip's district. Carly has 250.
Maybe 400.
And Steve has less than.
I suppose 300-ish.
Less than 300, less than 300.
Right about the same.
Okay.
You have a lot. If you're asking about the disproportionate amount between districts, y'all are getting an enormous amount in your district. So yes, that would be the place to cut if I had to cut anything in the district.
I had.
If priorities are set forth.
I had $400,000 possibly last year and like $300,000 the year before. Some of them had a million plus the years before. So it's not, it's not like, and these projects were pushed back so many years, that that's why some other council districts may get a million something one year, and other one may get 400, or 200, or 100. So therefore, that, you know, they want to try to say that. But I mean, hey, I left it alone last year and the year before, and I said, "All right, well, you know what, now, we need to finish some of these issues up, especially the main ones." So, you know, I don't see how you can, you try to veto drainage. I mean, like Council Wells brought up about a turning lane on Coleman Street, $500,000. That never even been talked about, and it got put in, and you're neglecting drainage and sewer. So like, that should, to me, should come first over a turning lane that's nothing, that is not really a city-created problem, you know, above management. But I mean, but that's it. So I mean, those sidewalks, some of the sidewalks I cut in front of the drainage. So I'll let it go, but at the end of the day, we need to get the drainage done, so.
And then we look, since we talk about last minute. Mr. Mayor, here one of the representatives that we have, y'all tried to, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna use the word sneak. You tried to sneak that project in that wasn't, never talked about, wasn't discussed at none of the three meetings that you talked about, but yet it was snuck in at the end in Gonzalez's district, and it was talked about. But yet, now just think of that project would have went on, that project would have overseen our project, and I sit there and said, and I said again, for the record, "You can take the $46,000 out of District Three. Give it to the lady in her district, because she shouldn't have to, she should, they don't deserve that. It's five of us up here. And I don't know if y'all ever been flooded or not. I never, I never received it. I never had that. But yet, it's our job to work with the taxpayers. That's our job. Stop making it about self, and work with the taxpayers, and I think we all be better off." President Kip, he made it very clear that he's willing to work, he's willing to cut, was the first one to cut in his district. And you can sit there and say it yourself, and I like how you said that. District Three, for 70 years, we haven't received nothing. And they got people in here in District Three. They know what's going on. They see what's been taking place. So if the city spends $10 million every year, we still won't catch up with some of these other districts. So nobody doing us a favor. We just want to see better in our area, like these good areas have. Here now, and for the record, that here we ready to put taxpayers' dollars into the drainage behind these people's houses, and they know who I'm talking about, and later I'm gonna be ready to call their names out. You will put drainage to cover up their canal, but we can't even get a canal fixed in District Three. And so I bite my tongue, I let a lot of stuff go. We're gonna start doing stuff, let's do it the right way for everybody. I never asked you to cover nothing up behind my house. I never asked you to cover up the canal on Mooney Avenue. But y'all was willing to cover up a canal. If I would have been sitting here, the canal would have been covered. And then ain't nobody gonna say nothing, everybody real quiet. Here, the airport ended up getting $270,000. The airport should be able to take care of itself. Charles, the mayor, y'all came in here, want to raise those guys our rent on those hangars. So we sat here and had a big discussion. Okay, you raised their rent. But every year, you study taking from the taxpayers to take care of the airport. I thought the airport port would take care of itself. That's what I always hear. So, yeah, we need help in District Three. We need help. And if don't nobody else say they don't need help in their district, that's on them. Yeah, we can always say, "Well, my district only got $200,000 this year." Well, look at all the other years you been getting. That ain't been said. So let's talk about the overall, how much, and let everybody know how much each district been getting every year. Don't just sit here and make it seem like, "Oh, District Three done got all the money this year." Hell, District Three ain't been getting no money. So that's why they getting some money to make up for the 70 years that they never received nothing. I asked for sidewalks. I asked for drainage. My first project was the parks. If we keep putting on the park, I don't worry about nothing else. Y'all stop putting on the park. And we ain't talking about no trees. We ain't talking about no boulders, all that's small. Get a kid something to do in District Three, and we don't have to worry about them breaking in nobody's house. See, everybody talk about the kids. I've been wanting to save the kids from the day I got up here. Still want to save. So let's work with every district, not these good districts. Good districts don't need nothing else. The bad districts need everything. So I'm willing to give up the $46,000 to get, for this young lady, for her project to pass. So I'm willing to do that. I've been giving away all the while. Ms. Cox, I don't even know if she in here or not. Ms. Cox came to every meeting we had, sat there and said what she wanted, invited her to the budget meeting. And what did I do? I ended up taking her project off. If I keep taking off, keep taking off, District Three won't have nothing. We have to do a better job. All of us going into our last year, and we know how it gonna get. We have to do better. We have to do better as a whole, as an individual. Stop looking at self and look at the people. It's for the taxpayers. It's not about me. Thank you.
Anyone else on that item?
Deborah McQueen, 1002 Magazine Street. I just have a question. Just want some clarity, because I speak in advance. So what we saying is, we saying we have 25 million anticipated for the budget, but actually, we have 30 million that we can put our hands on. 29? We can put our hands on.
The budget at this stage is a forecast, right? We don't know how much revenue we're going to take in.
The whole budget is a forecast.
It's a forecast, right.
We're not sitting on anything now.
We have some funds in our general fund, but we're talking, you know, a few million dollars, not 55 million dollars.
Proposal for the money that we are projecting to come in.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And some of it is not even gonna start flowing in until after the grace period for September for the new garbage and water.
Correct, yeah.
I just want a clarity. Thank y'all.
District One, Becky Wales. I have a problem. Mr. Andrews, you stated to my dad that you were gonna have the street widen out, and we haven't gotten it done.
That project is one of the items that I have on the list, that if the funds come in during this fiscal year, it would get done.
Was already in prior?
It was a two-phase thing. They came in, they done the drainage, they re-put in the driveways. In the second phase, is in, we brought up to come in this budget, but it's not, the money's not there for it, but it's on the list.
But why would you do the drainage without fixing the road? Don't you know we have like.
The drainage, the drainage.
But, hold on, wait, one second. You have like three buses that come back there. And we darn near butt heads like this trying to get through. It's horrible. So I'm just saying, why didn't we do the street and then do the drainage? So what?
You have to do the drainage first for them to be able to come back.
Okay, but that was, but that was on the agenda for a long time, to get the street widened out, right?
Right.
So why is it, why is it taking so long? And then I just heard the mayor state told, said that you took money from District One, and we have trees, all look like a desert when you walk, going down the street. We don't have lighting. It's just, it's just really horrible. All the lights are out on, basically on MC Moore Road, Apple, all of them. It's horrible. It's horrible. All the houses are just, it's just deplorable in the area. So I don't know if you take a ride or look around.
I take a ride. I roll with the code enforcement. They have.
You come up with it.
They, they working on it. They have a list that I gave them. There's a list that other people then gave them, and they're working on it. Now, back to the road. The money, when we said in here for this budget, was not there. So I asked each person that is sitting here by email, the fine thing that you could cut to get the budget through, but we will make a list that when the funds start coming in, and the money was there, we could pick it up on those projects. That was one of the projects that I have on that list.
But why did you get funds cut in the beginning? Why you didn't make that as a priority that's been on the list?
The money was not there for us to do the budget that we were looking at at the time. That's why I made that decision. And I asked each person up here, along with the cities.
You already had the money there, so.
The money, the money was not there.
Never was there. Never was there. The money was never there.
Like Charles just said, we have a forecast of what we're looking to try to work with.
But I didn't ask. I asked you was the money ever there to widen out MC Moore?
The first phase was done. The second, I'm trying to explain to you. Can let me explain?
But I'm just asking, was it ever there?
No.
Okay.
Because.
I just wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Good afternoon. Dan Lambert, 116 North Kate Street. Just had a couple of questions. I've just been sitting and listening. And do we have a $25 million? Is that how much money we collected last year?
We collected around 29.5 in sales tax.
$29 million, that's what we collected?
Correct.
And how much was the projected collection last year?
I think it was 29.5. It was right around that.
We collected what we projected.
Yes.
And this year, we're projecting how much?
29.5 is what the veto would arrive us at.
No, not right. No, we inflated the budget to 30 and a half.
Well, I'm saying with the veto. The veto brings us back down.
He didn't veto the increase in sales tax.
That's correct, yes. So, yes, the, you can't, you can't veto that item.
Right.
So there is a projection of 30 million, but the veto brings us back in line with a more realistic projection of 29.5. But Councilwoman Gonzalez is technically correct.
29 and a half to 30 million is our projected income.
Correct.
And how much are we projecting right now to spend? Did I hear $5 million over the projected budget?
No, no.
I'm hearing that wrong?
You heard, that was original, what we, that was.
Plus $5 million, and y'all cut down to 30?
Yes, before this veto, before this veto. We had work sessions, and we got it all down. So that was, that was some talked about items in two meetings.
We're spending what we projected.
Yes.
Basically, last year.
Yes.
Okay.
It's there. It was line 12 with increased sales tax, a million dollars. That was, that was line 12 item that was increased.
Evening, Council. Stanley Campbell, District One. We've had multiple discussions regarding the budget and the budget session and how the budget's done. I want to see, is there anything that the council can do to amend the charter and how the budget is presented? I think I've asked this before, where the budget can be presented and broken down into districts so we can have a better allocation module for them when you're looking at the budget. Is that possible?
It is possible. I asked this a question when I first got in office. But the problem is, they not gonna do it, because we'll see where all the money going at in certain districts. So it won't be done. The engineer made a big deal out of it. We're, we working on our third accounting, so you can sit here and ask the new one, and she might do it. But the problem is, from what I see, it won't be done, because now we'll see exactly where the money going at. And that's what the problem gonna be, and which all the councilmen's pretty much know what district get the money. So it's, it's new to you all, but it's not new to us.
Okay, so, but you can amend the charter to require it, correct?
Yes.
So Stanley, I don't know if that would need a charter amendment. There, I think there's a way that that could be done. But we've talked about this before, and to Councilwoman Wells' point, I've made spreadsheets in the past showing how much more money District Three actually has gotten in the last few years. But, and that's not even actually accurate, because one of them was money that we got after COVID. It did the drainage, because they were having a huge drainage problem, but that also helped District Four. You know, we have, you know, Sam and I have Church Street together. So if we do Church Street, it's both of our districts. So the lines of the districts don't match up always with our capital dollar. Sometimes we're doing, you know, Kip's got the airport. So if there's a big airport project, that could inflate what people think he was getting. So I think that was why the engineer didn't love the idea of breaking it down by districts. We've had conversations, because this budget process has been so difficult, to say, "All right, everybody gets a million dollars. Spend it how you want." Again, that's, is that fair? We have, some people have greater needs, and then some areas require more dollars, like, you know, Devon had Minnesota Park. That's $600,000 project, right? It affects everyone. It affects sales tax. So it doesn't necessarily make sense to say you only get a certain amount of money, because the money affects everybody in the city. It's for the benefit of everybody in the city.
Right. Well, that's not the reason that I was asking that for, to give each district a certain amount of money. Basically, I was asking, because if you have historical data on it, let's say if yourself and President Kip, you guys want to look at the historical data, and he looks at that, "Hey, listen, I canceled some projects for you two years ago. Can you cancel a couple of projects for me?" And he can show you historical data where he did these things, and, you know, you've been inflated for the last four years. Hey, can you help me get this done? That's the only reason I was asking.
Mr. Stan, let me tell you this, before you sit down. Who the engineer worked for?
For the city.
Thank you. So how do you guys get positions, and yet they tell us what they gonna do? And I think everybody worked for the city. I worked for everybody in here. Everybody worked for the city, worked for everybody in here. And it's amazing how these guys get jobs, and yet they take here and tell us what they gonna do, but they don't realize. They work for the city.
So Stan, this is based on.
I worked for all of y'all.
Yeah.
Priority problems. You have a Sewer and Water Department who knows what lift stations are down or need to be rebuilt. They know what sewer lines need to be replaced. That's where these projects come up. So there may be more District Three, as there was when I first came in, because we were putting forest mains in from Brown's Velvet all the way to the plant, redoing a new pond, bringing North Oaks in to the plant, because they had so many problems in District Three with sewer backing up in the homes.
Yeah.
Every year, there's a different priority to some of these departments, street departments, and then equipment as well. So that's how that works out. So to say, and as you just said, well, you're not really looking to see it blanketly even.
Yeah.
It all depends on what the priorities are in each district or the city as a whole.
Right. And what I'm talking about, the city has their priority. Right, and, and what I'm talking about, the city has their priorities, however, the council, but each councilman is gonna have their priorities for what's important to them, from speaking with their constituents also. So, I think, I think they need to be a part of that side from, uh, the administration of the city also. You know, you know what I mean?
And they are.
Because, because I mean, your priorities are gonna be different.
They can't get in touch with the, the engineer? There'd be only one person that I can say may not get in touch with the engineer because they don't want to. Those engineer, the engineer is there to talk with them, to ride with them. And, look, I have, they have one district, I have five. All the districts are mine. I want to make sure that everyone's getting what they can get and, and should get.
Hey, hey, that's a good point you just made, having five.
Forty-five thousand dollars isn't gonna fix the project that we needing to do on Alida, it's gonna take more than that.
Right. Keep in mind, with you having five districts and they having one, kinda, in, in, in certain situations, the citizens, when they, when they, they have issues, basically, they can care less about what's going on citywide. They wanna, they care about what's going on in their neighborhood. And that's why I said the priority is gonna be different from the city side versus the district, you know what I mean?
No, I don't agree with that.
Number two.
An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances regarding prohibition on persons under the age of twenty-one in standalone bars and nightclubs. Councilman Andrews?
All right. This item was placed on the agenda a while back due to some concerns about underage activity of people entering inside of the standalone bars in Hammond. At this time, we will begin to take public hearing comments on these items. I will inform the citizens, uh, before moving forward into this item, several of, uh, the members that are sitting up on this board, uh, under a legal, mm, item with this right now as far as we're being sued. So, I've been informed by my attorney not to make any public comments on this item due to the fact that we are under a suit. I can't speak for any other council members, or the mayor, or the city attorney at this point, I'm just giving you my perspective on it from where I've been advised by my attorney. But at this moment, we'll take public, uh, comments on it, everyone is limited to three minutes.
Good afternoon, Ricky Brocato, 17538 Avalon Terrace, Hammond. I own the Crescent Bar, I'm a third-generation owner, established in nineteen thirty-eight. Downtown Hammond has been a entertainment district since the mid-fifties, late-sixties, and on through now. Southeastern Louisiana University is an engine that drives the whole town of Hammond, especially downtown. Uh, as I look around, there's, there are generational owners of businesses here, uh, some have taken over generational-owned businesses, and, and their livelihood and investment is, is great in the town of Hammond. This was all started kinda back when the Downtown Development District was, uh, incorporated. Uh, we just had a, uh, presentation to honor Ms. Marguerite Walters who started that, uh, aimed at making Hammond downtown, uh, an entertainment district, restaurants, bars, uh, huge investment in the Columbia Theater. And through the years, uh, Southeastern students, uh, of which I think are huge, uh, group of that population, student athletes and students, are not twenty-one years old. They're young adults, they fall into a category where they can go into a bar, dance, listen to music, have fun, meet the, meet the boys, meet the girls, girls meet the boys, um, that's designed for that, and that's under the ATC of Louis, of Louisiana that allows that to happen, and I think Hammond follows along with that. That being said, there, there would be a huge economic impact if that group of, the population of Southeastern can't go downtown and socialize. What is their option? Private parties, uh, neighborhood parties, I don't know, anyway, that's, that's beside the point. The, the vision is there. Hammond would be probably the only city in the state of Louisiana that has a university that would not allow this to go on. Economic impact is, uh, a reduction of sales tax, I guess. You know, I, I have business owners in, in other cities as far as, you know, Thibodeau, Lake Charles, Natchitoches, even, even LSU Baton Rouge that, that, that allow this to go on, and I think that the bar owners are responsible enough to keep this intact as far as IDing, uh, allowing who to come in, who not to come in. The bartenders have a responsible vendor's certification and know how, have been trained to identify if someone is either A, not old enough, or B, not acting properly, and they need to go out. And I look around at all the bar owners, and, and I stress standalone bar owners, I don't know why that has come about, I mean, so if you, if you're eight, eighteen to twenty-one, you can go in a restaurant bar, but you can't go in a standalone bar. I don't know what that's gonna solve either, so, um, you know, it's all started, like I say, with DDD, uh, Southeastern had what they call Fan Fair, which led into Jazz Downtown, which led into Hot August Night, uh, other cities around our area envy us because of what we have. We have a beautiful theater that has events, we have a university that has events, every football game, every homecoming, uh, alumni come back that have been there away for fifty years or so, they still come back, say, "We used to hang out at the Brown Door, we used to hang out at the Crescent Bar, we used to hang out at Kelly's, now Benny's." It, it's, it's part of the history of Hammond. I don't, I don't see where keeping them from going in a bar is going to solve the, the problems. If it's, if it's an underage, bar owners don't want underage people in their bars, they're, they're, they're a liability, they're not an asset to their business. I don't think anybody caters to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, Todd DeLong, 206 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana in downtown. My wife Regina and I own the Red White and Brew, we own a cigar shop in downtown called Boutique de Fume. We own rental properties in downtown, we're very heavily invested into this community. The other thing that I do is I volunteer my time on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Development District, and my job on that board is to attract footprints to downtown Hammond through creative programs, through Hot August Stroll, any other program that we can do to get people to come downtown. My job as a business owner in downtown Hammond is to convert those footprints into customers. Those customers spend money in our establishments, and those monies become tax dollars that we give to this city. I think it's incredibly irresponsible of us to pass any law or any ordinance that shoves customers away from our city. That's my opinion, and I had to share that with everyone tonight. Thank you for your time.
I would just like to make a statement, Tina Latino, Hammond, Louisiana. We all sat here and listened to how badly the city needs sidewalks, the infrastructure, the sewage, the roads, and I don't understand why we would cut into the opportunity of revenue that the city and these people could benefit from. That's it for now.
Good afternoon, my name is Mitch Harold, 208 Shreve Drive. Good afternoon, my name is Mitch Harold, 208 Shreve Drive. I'd just like to share my opinion on that, and it was, well, you're gonna have to shut down, like, like, I'm sorry. You're punishing the bars and clubs and, uh, opportunities, like, the people who aren't doing wrong, the bars and clubs who aren't doing wrong, the fun outings for the youth who are always IDing wristbands and making sure everything is in check, you would be punishing the people who are doing everything right when you should be punishing people who are doing everything wrong, just like in a classroom environment where you, if you, one student is acting up, and then you punish all the students. It, it's just how I see it in my eyes, and I'd just like to share that with y'all. That's it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ian McKinnon, 604 West Michigan Street. I've got three points. First, if the point of this ordinance is to stop underage children from entering bars, the bars are already breaking the law. What makes you believe that if changing the age is gonna make them obey the law? Second, what effect is this controversy having on businesses that look at Hammond to move here? When the first few items they Google are this controversy of the city council appearing to take punitive action against businesses? If their choice is to develop here, or Denim Springs, or Covington, and those cities aren't taking punitive action against their businesses, why would they come here and not go there? Third, I worked my way through graduate school, working in bars in this town. I find it hard to believe that they've changed their policies in twenty years. We did everything we could to keep underage people from the bar. As Mr. Ricky talked about, they're a liability, they have no money to spend, all they can do is cause problems. I know you said you heard that a child paid to enter a bar here in town. That child may have just been making that story up, seems likely. The bar has nothing to gain by letting people in, underage, and everything to lose. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Gabby Hoag, I work for Kate Street Pub, and I help run the bar. Sorry. I'm twenty years old, I'm a nursing student at Southeastern, and, man, I pour a lot of blood and sweat into that bar, and, um, I think it is insane that I can do so much work for a place, but I can't go back in to hear a band, a comedy show, like, I'm not there to drink, I don't even like drinking myself, I'm not of that age to drink alcohol. But it, it doesn't make sense, and I, I've worked there for two years now. Eighteen-year-old, fresh out of high school, needed a way to pay for college, went into Kate Street, I loved the music, I loved the environment, I loved the vibe. I found a dream of becoming a DJ, that dream did not last long, trust me, but, um, Kate Street Pub gave me the opportunity. I started there as a DJ, realized that was a really good dream to have, but, uh, maybe not the one for me. So, I became a bartender, and the amount of people I've met, the smiles that have been put on people's faces, sorry. It seems dumb, I know, you're not, you're not twenty years old, but you were once. Friends are important, that environment is important, and y'all are trying to take that away from a lot of people, a lot of people who could be in their dorm rooms, stuck with their own thoughts. Can't, passing this ordinance is really not gonna do much, but, um, raise house parties, a lot of house parties, um, and you know what can happen at those house parties? Drugs, guns, people who are thirteen, it is easy to walk through a door. When you're walking through a door of a bar, you get wanded by a metal detector, your ID gets scanned, technology is insanely advanced these days, people are going to get fake IDs, simple as that. We will do our best, we can do three ID checks, but this has been thrown onto us without speaking to anybody else, and it's, it's very slimy. And I think that it just needs to be thought about, and it's not just about kids at this point. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman, Rayleigh Robertson, 12722 Virginia Street, Amy, Louisiana. I have worked at Fifth Arcade and Bar for quite a long time, in and out, throughout different things. It was actually my first real adult job at the age of eighteen, um, when I stepped in a bar and took the role of being an adult, which was making real adult money while dealing with real adults. Something that I pride myself highly in is that I come from a family of having a strong work ethic. I started working at the age of fourteen, so being the youngest in a bar, working with people that are between the ages of twenty-one to twenty-five, who have either gone through college or who have lives, and I'm just now starting that, was a lot for me to withtake. What I learned from working in a bar is that you not only grow a voice within yourself, but you learn so much about other people as well. When it comes to working in a bar, understandably, being that you can work at a bar in eighteen and not drink, comes with a lot of responsibility, understandably. Being that I've worked in a bar now for as long as I have, and I'm going on twenty-two, I have learned not only so much about myself, but so much about life in general, and it has made me grow as a person, honestly. And the one thing that this ordinance is going to do is take away that opportunity for young adults to grow within themselves and learn how to be adults. Not everybody goes to college, I myself do not. I work at the bar, and I also have my own business full-time. Does that mean that I could go to school? Yes, but I'm pouring myself and everything that I do, not only into this bar, but into my personal self and my job as well. And with having this ordinance, we're not only taking that opportunity away from incoming students to not only enter our bar, but to also work at our bars. At the end of the day, not everybody has a handout, I surely didn't. I didn't have parents who could tell me that they could afford from my college education. So, if I decide to go to college, I'm gonna have to work for that. One of the main ways that you can make that money is through a bar. I have learned that making money in a bar depends on your work ethic, how hard you work and determine yourself to make that money. So, if we take that away from not only the people of underage of twenty-one to not only be able to work or access our bar, we're pertaining to everything revenue-wise that we offer, um, in our name, it's Fifth Arcade and Bar, we do more than just offer drinks. I can assure you that there are plenty of under-twenty-one-year-olds who come into our bars strictly to either DD or come to play games, because we are the only bar on the strip that offer arcade games. Ideally, not every other bar does that, but we do, and that's a source of income that we make. So, even though we're not making money physically off of them through alcohol sales, we are making it through other things that we offer in our bar, because again, we are a bar that is applying to eighteen and older. So, I just want to make it known that being that the college is the main source of our income, if we take away job opportunities and revenue made through alcohol sales, we're not only going to decrease the enrollment of Southeastern, but we're going to push away all of the other options that we have, because I can assure you that not only do we get people from Southeastern and outside of Tanshup Parish to come to our bar, but we have people coming from Mississippi just because we offer more than just alcohol. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matt. Two ten West Thomas Street, across the street from Kate Street Park. Eighteen-year-olds have to sign up in case we get drafted. Eighteen-year-olds can die for their country. Eighteen-year-olds can do a lot of things. They can go to a bar and be responsible. I mean, they can. And even though they can't drink, even though they should be able to, and I, we all grew up, it was eighteen to drink. But, at the same time, this is ridiculous, guys. I mean, you guys created a problem that doesn't exist. Leave it alone, please.
Anthony Donzie, 17014 Octavia Street, Hammond. I have more concerns than anything with this whole idea of banning 18-year-olds, 19 and 20-year-olds from going to bars. I, I'm in the middle of a budget right now for a new project in downtown Hammond. We moved out of downtown Hammond after Ida over at Black and Brew, and I had another business here in downtown Poorhouse Pizza. Barely got voted in for my liquor license for the city. Narrow, three to two vote, mainly on the topic of drinking and serving alcohol at my location. We had everything invested. The business is now Milan's Pizza. It's a contributing business to sales tax. We're looking to put, me and my partners are looking to put a million-dollar project in downtown Hammond. This is putting questions in our head. Do we want to come back to downtown Hammond? We don't exactly know what the end game is on this. Is it going to extend to restaurants? Is it going to extend to the bars in the restaurants? Is there going to be some wild ordinance that's going to restrict bars and restaurants in the same, in the same group? So I'm here more to express my concern about an investment that we're planning on making in 2026 in downtown Hammond to revive a piece of property that's been sitting for a little while. I, I just wanted to express concerns on it, because it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. We're sitting here complaining about paying stuff for a budget that we can't really necessarily afford, but we, we also want to turn away revenue via sales tax. Doesn't that make sense to me? It does throw into question a couple of things that me and my partners will talk about, bringing this back into downtown Hammond. So as you all know, we've, we brought back one building that was considered doomed for business. But we want to come back to downtown Hammond, but we also want it to be a friendly business environment for, for everybody. We also want to contribute to the community. We contribute to the community all the way out there on, Club Deluxe. Can't remember what road I'm on. But it's just, it's worrisome. So that's my two cents on it.
Tim Weaver, 105 South Chestnut Street. Do I slap it? There we go. Okay. Tim Weaver, 105 South Chestnut Street. I think this is bigger than the city council. I think I should put it on a ballot, like a big-boy ballot for the masses to get it on, you know? That's my couple cents there.
Hi, my name's Emily Calonato. I live in Hammond. And, sorry, kind of nervous. And I'm 18 years old. I do work at Kate Street Pub, but I have been going there since I turned 18, and it felt like home when I walked in. The bartenders were so nice. I have found some of them to be my closest friends now. My only question is, where do y'all want us to go if y'all plan to pass this? Y'all don't want us to pay $5 to $10 to get into a bar, drink a couple waters, possibly drink a few sodas, talk to where we don't have to host at houses or apartments or anything like that. Instead, y'all want us to go pay $30 to go play mini golf, when some people are paying for college, like she said. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name's Tanner Nugent. I live on 17625 Avalon Terrace. I actually just found out I'm neighbors with Mr. Ricky. I didn't know this, but I work at Benny's Bar. I've worked there for four years. I've lived in Louisiana for six years. I'm from California. Grew up, raised 26 years, moved to Pittsburgh for a little bit and came down here. And this town has a very unique feeling that no other town in America or any place I've ever been really does have. Louisiana has stuff that no other state in the United States has. Okay, you can go and get a drive-through daiquiri with a straw with a piece of paper on it. I've never, that, nowhere on, yeah, great. And you guys are talking about sidewalks, and you're talking about drainage and stuff that really does affect people, and this budget, this budget, we can't figure out the number, oh, what, what was it? I don't know. But you're going to take away sales tax? You're going, now you're taking away actual stuff that does affect us, and more than tax, culture, something that is here, that it's inherent to Louisiana. I'm not even from here and I'm fighting for it, because I think it's that great. Thank you.
My name's Corus. I'm from 405 Hewitt Road. And I just want to put a chokehold on something that somebody said a little bit ago, kind of. It's why I've been a young adult for a second, if nobody's ever been one before. It's hard. Being, being a young adult is hard. Being someone fresh out of high school who doesn't know where the hell they're going in life, it's, it's hard, especially for young people who don't have that, that, that storybook guidance from home, you know? And I could touch on, you know, just myself from being, I'm 29 now, but when I was 18 or 20 years old, I was that kid. I didn't know what I was doing. Mentally, I was screwed up, you know? Going to Kate Street Pub at 18 years old is one of the best things that I could, could ever did. Going to Brown Door, going to the buzz where, when it was where Fitz is now. Lot of long-term friends I've met there, a lot of smiles got put on my face there. When the ordinance was brought up, the, the first week, Councilman Wells's point on it was, you know, going to school to party is, is not what, what the focus is. That's not our focus either. It's not about going at a party. It's about those kids who need somewhere to unwind, those kids that need an escape, somewhere to go and have fun before they go back to that reality, whatever reality they have, that's, that's completely the opposite of that. The, 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 taking away from the local businesses that we have here is words that I can't say right now. But I, I think it's so many other solutions that we can think of, come up with, to, to get to whatever, whatever your reason is for, for wanting to do this. I know when the ordinance was brought up, President Kip, your, your reason, if I'm not mistaken, you're the one that had brought it up, you're a school teacher or in the school, and you say you heard, you know, kids always talking about the bars they got into and did this and did that. Well, in my opinion, I feel like you should have one-on-one with those parents and not, not, not shut down the bars, not shut down the bars, not, not, not take money out of, out of Mr. Mule's pocket and Tina's pocket and, or Tina's 21 up in there, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that. But you know what I mean? It's, it's other things. It, it always starts at home for kids under 18, period, you know? Has nothing to do with, 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 with the bars downtown, you know? That's all.
Beauty Latina, down here in Hammond. I've been, I've been in business all my life. I was, I was, I, I had a bar when I was high school. Nobody, I can't imagine anybody could vote against this, 18 years old. I can't, I can't imagine. I, I just, I just, it, 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 it doesn't make sense to me. Nobody, no man, nobody could vote on this with a, with a good mind.
Good morning. My name is Romeo Agdemag. I live here in Hammond with my parents. I come from the Philippines. I grew, I came here 2009. Come from the Philippines. Our age, legal age of drinking is 18. Legal age to go into a bar is 18. If you were to look at other countries, France, Great Britain, Germany, they're well-known for drinking, right? Hell, what their, what's their minimum age? 18. Why the hell do we have to change? Right? It's not my problem. When I'm in the Philippines, I drink responsibly. I go to bars, yeah, I go to midnight clubs. It's even worse over there. Why? Because they don't really care. You could buy out anyone, right? You can go to, you can go to bars, midnight clubs, up until four, five in the morning. Here, eh, two or three, right? You go, you go with this man, I'll guarantee you, it's going to get worse, rather than subsidizing it to maybe two to three streets. Hell, you want to go, you know, all the EBR, chase someone down, right? You want to go all the way to Livingston, right? I mean, it's not my problem, right? You want to cause this trouble, so be it, right? Put more police, put, you know, potentially more students, more students' lives at risk, right? Rather than, you know, have them walk from campus, especially in charge of students, right? Some of them come here at 17, 18, right? They come from places like Germany, right? Ireland, Great Britain, France, right? They come from places where you can do this legally of age without any problems. The only problem is really just y'all. You guys want to pass it? Go ahead. I'll just go somewhere else, right? I'll take my business somewhere else. Some other bar that's not here, they're going to profit off of me a little bit more. I don't drink here, but I guarantee you, I turned 21 in October, but I'll go somewhere else. That's not my problem. Shit, I heard Targetland is open, so I'll go there.
Chuck Rothwell from 405 East Charles, big blue house on the corner, the one that's not a big ugly gray thing anymore. We moved here seven years ago. My daughter graduated from Hammond High during COVID and all that crap, which they didn't have a graduation. So the only thing that kept her to where she's on schedule, where she's doing right now, which she finishes her last year of law school this next year. Anthony Donzie gave her a job as a bartender. She works, she works for tacos still to this day. She started working at the age of 18. It's helped her to grow up and mature as a young adult and learn how to deal with different people that she has to deal with at the bar. Just because an 18-year-old's at the bar does not mean they're going to be drunk and stupid. We have adults. 18s are adults, but we have 30 and 40, 50 years old to go to the bar and get drunk. What does 18 have to do with? I mean, the bars are not the place that's going to run our children to hell or anything else. The bars have helped my daughter, and like I said, she finishes her last year of law school this year, and she's already got a job offer once she passes the bar. Anthony's Donzie Bar is what saved my daughter from a long time ago.
To add on to what the young lady from, I think she said she worked at Kate Street, there's going to be more, they're, they're going to do what they want to do. You shut it down from downtown, then there's going to be a huge house party on Cherry Street where 20 unis got to go over there and, and all kind of crazy stuff's going to happen or it's going to happen across town. They're gonna, they're gonna have, they're gonna have fun. They're gonna do what they want to do. They're gonna, they're gonna get what they can't get anymore if you take it away from them. But how many times versus police or sheriff's department got to go bust up house parties versus police and sheriff's department having to go shut down a bar because something crazy going on? It's more, it's more regulated at the bars. It's, it's, I mean, the owners are there practically 80, 90% of the time, not all the time. And if you don't want the city going crazy and burning down and houses blowing up and kids getting shot, because they can bring guns through that house, like she said, and not the, the metal detector at Brown Door when they're winding you or whatever, you don't want all that to happen. I think you should let these kids continue to responsibly do what they're doing, because as far as I know, I, I haven't seen the issue for this to be brought up in the first place. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Wayne J. Decoti, live in Ponchatello. I've been coming to this town for a long time. From the Fifth, used to be Augustines, including my time working in New Orleans. When I worked there, we enforced laws with fake IDs, checked it twice. We had scanners. We followed the ATC laws, including everyone else. Why do we need the ordinance to happen? It's going to kill revenue. It's going to cause transfers from different universities. It's going to cripple Hammond. That's how I see it. Nothing against you, Councilman. You're just doing your job, but this ordinance is going to cripple the economy. We used to be that age, get young and stupid. We're now as adults. We can do more better. But I've been knowing Mule, Tina for so long, they know what they're doing in handling minors trying to be stupid. But I agree with the young girl. You don't want parties going in houses that causes shootings and stuff and fires. What do you make it better and all that stuff? I'll give my, end my mic.
Jonathan Cranfield. I live on South Cypress Street downtown. I moved here about five years ago. At the time, I was working in the film industry, and I wasn't sure if we were going to stay in Hammond. My wife and I, my girlfriend then, we signed a six-month lease. She wanted to work at a salon here. I was shooting a movie in Baton Rouge, and the commute was a little shorter. And what we found in Hammond was kind of a remarkable sense of community and a sense of voice, a sense of momentum. Hammond was kind of a cool town, and it felt like it's getting cooler every day. We've been here for years now. We're looking at buying a home here. We opened our own business downtown. My wife has a salon. I work for Gnarly Barley now. And I guess that's the thing, is there was momentum here. I think there's still momentum here. It's a town that's growing and changing, and it's a town where your voice can be heard. And what I see in this discourse is a massive loss of momentum. And with all of these people standing up to speak and voice their opinion on this, I feel like if we push through with this, we're telling people like me that your voice isn't heard, that there isn't another step to take from here, a place to grow from here, because these are all people who live, operate businesses in the community, and they're expressing their vision for the community going forward. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Landon Pets, 301 East Roberts Street. So I just want to address a few things. This ordinance puts young people more in danger. Like, I know we're hyper-focused on whether young people are drinking or not, which we haven't really proved in any sense that they are. But this ordinance actually puts them in more danger, because they'll go to house parties, as the people have mentioned. At those house parties, they're in more risk of alcohol poisoning and drugging increase. Death by alcohol, sorry. I, I had a friend myself in high school who had a party at his own house, and he eventually asphyxiated on his own vomit, because he didn't know, or, excuse me. The people around him did not understand, they didn't, they didn't know the signs to look for. They thought he was too drunk, put a blanket over him. He threw up on himself. There's also a police detail outside of each one of these establishments. If any officer on detail noticed any young adult way too intoxicated or drugged, because it also increases the chances of date rape, and in distress, they would absolutely intervene. And, and that, that disappears with this ordinance. You're actually removing that safety net with this ordinance. Give me one second, sorry. So, yeah, push them out of the public square. And again, I don't want to just sit up here and complain, but restriction didn't work in the 60s. It, it, it never works. You can't just restrict young adults from doing the things that they want to do. You need to offer them another option. I'd, I'd love to sit down and talk with some of you about some ideas that I have. They're not a complete thought, but I think, I think steering young minds in, in the right direction versus, I don't know what to do, I, I just want to go have fun, you know? When, it becomes so costly when, when you have your mind geared on. it becomes so costly, um, when, when you have your mind geared on, uh, your future that, and you're a teacher, like, you, you understand, right? Um, then, um, sorry, let me go back to my notes, 'cause I'm winging it right now. But that, the idea is, it's a proactive approach. I'd love to talk to you about it. And, um, I, I don't think this ordinance is going to do what you want it to do. Um, I think it's gonna create more problems, and there are better ways to go about it, though I do believe your heart's in the right place. Um, there, there's just, there's just a better option to push young minds towards, you know, a better alternative to where, like, drinking is like, no, I don't wanna do that because I'm making more money. You, you know what I mean? So, anyway. Um, thank you.
Daniel Leber, 116 North Kate Street. I have here three hundred and twelve signatures and verified signatures of a petition asking you not to do this. I've already shown it to you, you know what it is. I am the one that filed the lawsuit because this was brought up illegally. You guys, first of all, we met with, uh, Councilman Andrews. All the bar owners met with him at a meeting discussing the park ordinance. At that meeting, Mr. Andrews said nothing about bringing this ordinance up and snuck it onto the ballot. He then brought it up and said there'd be public comment. Well, we rallied, and we had over a hundred people here to speak, and Mr. Andrews said, no. The council said, no, we don't wanna hear you guys speak. Sorry, you came and shut us down. That's against the law. It's against the meeting laws, the open meeting laws, say that when you put something out there, you have to take public comment. Now, it's disheartening to watch the councilmen sit on their phone and get up and walk out and not listen to the people that are here. I would like, I'm sorry, but I'm on a clock. I would like to thank the councilmen that do sit here and listen to their constituents. It's very much appreciated and noticed. But Councilman Andrews, you then lied to all of the people when we did have a meeting. You told us, Tina asked you, did you try to rally support for this ordinance, and you said, no, I did not. I talked to one preacher, when in fact, you had already sent out a letter to twelve preachers asking them to support this ordinance, to come here and sign a petition that you sent them on City Letterhead to support this ordinance because the enemy was here. We're the enemy. Perilous times we're in. That's what you said. And then you had the gall to tell your preachers not to come, that you were gonna cancel the meeting. Don't come, I'm gonna cancel it. So, but you didn't tell all of us. Didn't you do that? Didn't you tell your preachers you canceled the meeting, you were gonna table it? Don't come? Of course, you're not gonna answer me. But if you didn't tell them, then why didn't they come? We were all here, but none of the people you had supporting you were here. Why? Because you told them not to come. This is a political farce, and you've been caught in it, okay? That's why I'm suing all of you. That's why I'm suing you. It's a matter before the twenty-first District Court right now, and I've sent a letter to Louisiana Attorney General asking them to get this entire farce removed because it's illegal. You guys have done what you wanna do for so long, you think you can just operate with impunity. Well, guess what? Somebody has stand up to you and said, no more. No more. I'm not gonna let you break the law. You knowingly did it. Andre, you let him. You knowingly broke the law and put this on the agenda. And the judge will hear about it. Thank you.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances Regarding Alcoholic Beverages in City Parks.
All right, we've had some public hearing on this item about the, uh, alcohol beverages in the public parks. I'll open it back up for additional public hearing at this moment. All right, no one?
Tina Latino, Hammond, Louisiana, Benny's Place. Um, I can stand up here and keep repeating all the things that I've said in previous meetings, but I would, I'd choose not to. Um, I know that it was mentioned to exempt the Downtown Development District, that area. Uh, I know it's not on the agenda. I would hope that we're still visiting that or considering it at least. We had a, an event this past Saturday in Kate Square Park. Once again, I invited and encouraged all of you from the council and the mayor to come out and see it. I have videos if you would like to see that, if we can, I don't know how you can, but I'll pass my phone around. But just how family-friendly and how it just, everything was well. There are children there. There are. There, in one corner, there's, the other children that are present are with their parents. There was no problems. You know, it's just local beer from Gnarly Barley. It's all tax, again, revenue that's generated and put back into the city. So I'd just like to, you know, to consider, to keep it, um, the exemption for the downtown area.
Hi, Council. Michelle Kendall, Director of Downtown Development District. Um, I guess I, I did not notice the exemption or any revisions to this ordinance. Um, I hyperlinked on this agenda, um, so I was trying to get an understanding to see when those revisions would be made available to the public to review, if at all.
Andre, go ahead and do that now.
There was some discussion of making those amendments, but that was not what was hyperlinked on the agenda.
Right, 'cause we have to put, was the addition that was put on there first. Go ahead, Andre.
Yes, so, uh, we do have to put on the agenda, well, as it was introduced. So there has been, as a result of the discussion, the ordinance has been revised, and it does allow for exemptions to nonprofits who can apply for a variance, for special community events in public parks within the Hammond Downtown Development District, with the event required to have all alcohol served by a licensed alcohol vendor. And that's in the ordinance that talks about an application to the mayor. If a, if an organization's been denied that event permit, they can appeal that to the city council. In the other section that dealt with the council, an open container, it, that language was changed to match the language I just read, which basically says the open container could be waived, uh, in parks to nonprofit organizations that apply for a variance, uh, for special community events in public parks located within the boundaries of the Hammond Downtown Development District, with the event required to have all alcohol served by a licensed alcohol vendor, and the council may impose conditions deemed necessary to maintain good order and public safety, as they sometimes do, like hours, limiting hours of the event. So that is what had been brought up in public comment, that had been discussed, and so there was an ordinance drafted to account for that.
Okay. Um, some questions regarding, um, serving by a licensed alcohol vendor. Um, that, for our case of events, is typically not a problem. We do work with Benny's Place, most importantly, on most of our events to serve alcohol. However, um, in addition to um, our standalone bars being very big part of the culture of downtown, I did not speak on the last item, um, but we certainly will want to see the, their operations maintained as they are, um, by not restricting, um, uh, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-year-olds from entering into those establishments. We also try to do our job to bring people here through our events. Um, Hot August Stroll being one of them. Um, the wine and cheese stroll has been a big part of that event, and the nature of that is alcohol is served by our downtown establishments through sampling. So there are restrictions that we follow, and this is all through the ATC, where we have, um, our businesses participating through that event that are not licensed to serve alcohol. Um, so I, I completely understand and respect the decision that, um, in, um, most capacities, that we should be working with licensed alcohol vendors for those sales. Um, I do think it's important that you keep that in mind as it relates to any pub crawl or, or, um, wine stroll that we were to do or another organization were to do, um, that the way that this is written presents some confusion to me to see if an event like that would be possible in downtown. Um, additionally, um, uh, other event organizers that we have within the Downtown Development District, um, for example, Hammond Barbecue, um, some of them may conduct their own alcohol sales as fundraisers for their event, and this would restrict their ability to do that. Um, I did inform our local event organizers that this is being heard tonight. Um, and so I think that some of those scenarios and situations might wanna be considered, um, as a part of the adoption of this. Um, defining licensed alcohol vendor, I, I don't know how that is defined necessarily per how it's written, um, but whenever we go through our processes to host the wine and cheese stroll for Hot August, for example, we get a special event permit from the ATC. We follow all the state's, um, processes to be able to, uh, have our businesses safely sample alcohol to, um, residents that, to, to ticket purchasers who participate in the event. Um, we check IDs. Um, they reserve the right to check IDs at that point in time. Um, so that, that is really the only item here that I see that might pose a challenge to, um, events as it relates to downtown.
Before you step away, Michelle, this only deals with the park.
No, not the second part.
No, with Andre?
Yeah, the second part of the ordinance goes with open containers within, and any, so it's, it's within the, the ordinance, which is anywhere and there's a public place, whether you can have an open container. Sorry, I'm not on the mic. Yeah. So the first part, you're right. It absolutely just does with parks. But then the amendment that he had sent out, that you had sent, or Lisa had sent to all of us, the second part against open containers, that will directly affect the, um, wine and cheese stroll or, um, the Hot August, not August, the, um...
Okay.
Yeah. So I have a suggestion for that, which is, you already have a sentence in there that the council may impose condition deemed necessary to maintain good order and public safety. So I would suggest that, take out the sentence requiring all alcohol served to be licensed vendors, and that could be by case by case. So if you're gonna have a thing in the park, you want an open container, the condition the council imposes is a licensed vendor. If you're gonna have Hot August night, and it's, y'all, y'all have a system. You have a wristband, a license, you have everything. It's ticketed. There is a way to control who is being served. And we have historically, that I know of, had no problems with your, your strolls. Um, have that, that's not a required, that's not a requirement for the open container for specifically a Hot August stroll. So that, that's how I would revise that. Um, and then other than that, I, the only other issue I had is, is the DDD nonprofit?
We're a governmental agency.
So would it, does that matter, Andre, in the way it's drafted?
Well, we'd wanna clean it up. I mean, I, I would say it is included, but that's the intention.
The version I sent included DDD, civic organizations, DDD, and the, uh, Art Center. But that's been taken out just as nonprofit. So I, I would be concerned that the Art Center and the DDD are not, and any other civic organizations are not nonprofits.
I just wanna ask, uh, Michelle, uh, earlier, whenever you originally came up here asking about the waiver, and I think you may have brought up, was that the, were you asking for the DDD to be able to serve alcohol amongst them, like, the DDD to where their money raised goes to the DDD? Or, I thought that's what I heard. I just wanna make sure if I mis, misheard. If that was the first time y'all were trying to do that, or?
No. So in May, whenever I came before the council to get waivers for Hot August and for Hammond Live, at that point in time, we were planning on selling alcohol at Hammond Live. The DDD has historically sold alcohol at several events. Hot August, we used to have beer booths. Um, when Hammond Live was picnic in the park, we did alcohol sales, beer, beer sales at that event. Um, that was under prior leadership. Um, but we have had a history of actually conducting sales for alcohol. Um, the first time I came before the council for us to, to get the request for us to sell alcohol was at that May meeting. Um, and I think that's where a lot of confusion kind of came into play, where discussion of not only just alcohol sales, but sales in general in parks came up, and I think that's where a lot of this has stemmed from, unfortunately. Um, but we are no longer, uh, selling alcohol at Hammond Live. We are working with, um, Benny's Place through their catering license to do that.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I think normally, or in the past, I thought y'all would hire out or partner with, I don't know, Benny's. They may have had another bar where not, and then, and then y'all did that.
Yeah, you've had Bloody Marys and Moses at the Market, um, or for Starry. We've worked with Benny's. Um, this, in past, in May, that was gonna be the first time that we'd be selling alcohol for the operation of that event, as Hammond Live does have additional expenses, and it was one of the revenue items that we were projecting for that event. However, we have, um, decided to no longer conduct our own sales of alcohol and are leveraging that with some additional sponsorships.
And that was my concern. That was my only concern up here when I heard. It was just that, you know, as a liability purpose with the city and being affiliates, uh, with the city, uh, I just felt that it probably would be best that it would be, um, you know, handled with a, a vendor that was local or whatnot. Ever, y'all wanna figure that out. But, uh, serve through them, so it would take out a little liability of the, of the city, even though, um, they're still selling alcohol. It wouldn't be directly a city or, or, um, a silly, uh, a city organization that's affiliated.
Well, just to specify, um, the Downtown Development District does operate under its own general liability policy. Um, we do, uh, obtain separate host liquor liability policies for our events. Um, so we do cover those on our own basis as it relates to our events as they stand, but I do understand where you're coming from. Um, I will also say, not just from the Downtown Development District side, but those other civic organizations that are being discussed, those that do conduct sales for their events as fundraisers, I know, um, Hammond Barbecue, with their operations, that them being one of them, I did let Jody and Brian know, um, the way that it's drafted, um, could present some challenges to them conducting sales. Um, so as they plan for their 2026 event, that might be something that come up in discussion. Um, so what is the next step for, um, having those revisions, um, be made public? Um, 'cause I know this is under old business, and it seems like it's been kind of going through a different process from introduction to final adoption. Um, so what is the next step, um, for this ordinance in particular?
Can we go, can we go add a word in here?
Yeah, I, I would say perhaps we...
You can do it now.
Do you want us to circulate it and then bring this back up, or make the amendment that we just discussed?
Well, I just, if, I didn't know if it was gonna be up for final adoption tonight or, um, if, uh, if there needed to be more time to make some revisions. Um, I just want to extend any help that we can give to those revisions. We're more than happy to do. So whatever helps the council make the best informed decision, we are happy to support.
Andre, do you think we need to, um, look at the language for nonprofit civic?
Yeah, I mean, I would have more eyes on it, if you want. I mean, I, the, the two issues that were raised was maybe including civic organizations as well as nonprofits, and then removing the requirement for having alcohol served by a licensed alcohol vendor, but the council could, in waiving the open container, impose that condition depending upon the event.
Case by case, yeah.
Uh, that it, that it, all alcohol be served by a licensed vendor. That could be imposed by the council on a case by case basis.
And so that would co, that would cover all of the events that, that the downtown continues to have?
It could.
Case by case, yeah. I would suggest we table it and then hyperlink the proposed change.
Yeah, so when it comes up for final adoption, then you had that discussion, whether you wanna table it and suggest that a revised ordinance be circulated, and that revised ordinance could be placed on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right.
For discussion and consideration. I appreciate it, Council.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Carmen Hughes, and I'm seventy-nine years old. I live across the street from Kate Street Park, and I take my lawn chair over, listen to the music, drink a beer once in a while, and I really enjoy the atmosphere. I don't want you to stop drinking beer in the park. But I also would like to thank the city for helping fix the sewage problem at the Council on Aging. I go there every day, and I really appreciate the work they did to fix the concrete there. Thank you.
All right. New business, number one.
An ordinance to remove unused outdated definitions for the city's Unified Development Code, the UDC. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, no op- The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, no opposition recommends adoption, four to zero.
As I explained when this was introduced at the last council meeting, our city planner, Frankie Legault, is in the process of going through our Unified Development Code and making some much needed changes. She decided to start with the definitions, what's before the council tonight, are definitions that appear in the Unified Development Code but then don't appear anywhere else. Some of these may have also been redundant. There were some that were essentially different definitions for the same thing. So what she's done is removed all of the unused or redundant definitions with this proposed ordinance. There's a subsequent ordinance that's coming up for tonight that does something similar, but is more, more directed to a particular area of the Unified Development Code. So again, this is just about housekeeping, cleaning up the Unified Development Code to remove unused definitions and redundancies.
Okay. Anyone here on this item? Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, 7:39, January 20, July 22, 2025. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Wells.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
So everyone, please stand for our prayer. Most gracious, love returning, Father, we thank you on this night. We give you glory and honor and praise that is due your name. Thanking you just for who you are. Thanking you for allowing your darling son up as a sacrifice in our place. Father God, we know that we are not a perfect people, but we strive for perfection. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you, Father God, that you allowed us just one more day, one more day on this journey, one more day to try to get things right. We just thank you for who you are. We thank you for each council member that is here and their families in the district that they represent. I ask that you continue to bless our mayor, the city administration, continue to bless our police and our fire department as they continue to protect and serve us. We thank you for it all right now. We strive to do everything decent, order, pleasing in your sight. Where you would get all glory, you would get all honor, and you would get all praise. And Father God, just shine that light up on us right now. And we give you praise and thanks for it all. In your darling son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen. At this time, I ask that all active and veterans of the military, please render the proper salute. I present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I ask for approval of our minutes of July 8, 2025, please.
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye, yes.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Old business, number one.
Review and consider overrides of mayor's veto of line items in the budget ordinance.
I, I'd like to make a motion to override the mayor's veto line item number 30.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
No.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Oh.
That's a shame, that was a drainage one, so I, we had that last time, but anyway, so I'd like to make a motion to override mayor's veto line item number, let's see, number, let's see, 29.
No.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
And Councilman Wells.
Aye.
I'd like, go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to, well, actually, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, the drainage is the most important thing. So Councilman Wells said that he was willing to, to cut that, and, you know, all these four, you know, the main thing was the drainage, that pushes back about 40-some people or more houses to get drainage fixed, to get the new street. So that's a shame, but, you know, I'm good, I don't, I don't need any sidewalks, I don't need, I don't need the drainage fixing that area in the road, so.
So Devon, which number did you say you wanted?
Number 23, for the $6,000, go towards the drainage. What it is, on item 30?
So my question, Andre, on that, how do we just?
Well, 30 is already voted on, right?
Right.
So that did not override.
Right. Okay, so...
So 29 was also both override, that got only three votes. Requires four votes. So both of those did not pass to override the veto. If there's another motion on the other items, then that can be brought up now.
So I, so, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Finished? So since he got turned down, and I can't give him the money on 40, on item 23, so I'm gonna see if I can get the money for myself now, so I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, we can take public comment.
Yeah, let's get a motion on the table first, then we can take public.
Okay, go ahead, Devon.
I'd like to make a motion for item 23, the $46,000.
Second.
Pam Hanes, District 3, just some clarity from the charter. It requires three votes and not four. I mean, it requires four votes, not three. Y'all ever clarify that?
No, the charter clearly says it takes four votes to override a veto. It would take three votes to pass an ordinance, but if the mayor vetoes it, then it takes four votes to override the veto.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it's sad.
Could you give us your name again, ma'am, so we'll have it?
Robin Taylor, 116 Alita Street. Every so often, I can't take a bath in my tub, I have two tubs, I can't take a bath because the sewer bags up in my tub. And we can't, I mean, I don't know what it takes to, I can't tell y'all how to vote because, like I said earlier, it's not your home. But if it was, I think things would be a lot different. Thank y'all.
Stanley Campbell, District 1. Hey, I just want some clarity. I think Mr. Lambert asked earlier about the budget. I think it was roughly 29, 29 million that we were budgeted for, for the fiscal year?
The, the budget that was passed by the council is closer to 30, based on our revenues projections. Again, I mentioned that water, sewer, and garbage collection fees, those won't increase. I think I said before, the end of September, it's actually September 1, they go into effect. We won't see those revenues until after the month of September has passed.
But it's a variance of about $500,000 from the previous year's budget?
Approximately. I think we were a little over 30 million with the budget that was approved.
I think you said last year was about 29, 29 mil.
Last year was about 29.5.
And with all of the capital projects that were budgeted for under this current budget, we're at 30, 30 million?
We would be, with the vetoes, we're back at around 29.5.
Okay. The money, the money was all there, Stanley, it was there.
Stanley, 116 North Kate Street. Pardon me, ma'am, I'm sorry, I was touched by what you said. Am I right that it would only take $46,000 to fix this problem that these people are having?
348, 348, but I...
348,000?
Thousand, but I would be willing to give up my 450, my...
Oh, my 350,000 dollars, a $30 million budget, so people don't have to take a bath in sewage?
Or water back, or that, or about 10 houses flooded with water.
Guys, make it happen.
So let, let me add.
And then the roads, and the roads can't be done until that's done, that's the problem, the roads can't be done, so I pushed back another, the roads have, probably one of the worst roads in Hammond.
Let me add, one of the things that's missing from this discussion is a lot of horse trading, right, in the, for other two budget sessions. There are millions of dollars of projects that people could have said, this is a higher priority, I want this first, I'll give up this, or can you give up this? I pushed back a project that was supposed to be this year to next year because there wasn't enough room in the budget, or I agreed to the push. The mayor proposed it, I said, yeah, that's a good use of money, we can wait on that. There are things that are happening in other districts that could have been swapped for something as high priority as this. This also was not presented to us in our budget work session of how bad of a need it was. Absolutely not. It's something that's been, that was on the budget. When we looked at it, that project was for 2028. And I realize now, I did look back, it's been pushed back every year, I agree with that. But in all those years, not once has it said, we can't flush our toilets. I have never heard that. When that was told in Devon's district, we put $3 million into fixing their things, right? I think it needs to go on the list of the highest priority. There's something in my district that's a high priority, put it above that list. The money is not there. Everyone keeps saying the money is not there. The money's not there until you go out and spend your sales tax dollars, and we get it every single month, and we get what we get. If we have a hurricane, or a shutdown, or something, some economy projections don't happen, or there's a big budget shortfall, or something, emergency happens in the city, that money's not there. I don't want to get people's hopes up that we're about to do something. There are projects that we have passed that have not been vetoed, they're not gonna happen if we don't have the money. The money is not there until you spend your money and give it to us to put on things that are budgeted. We can't overbudget just because people want projects. If there are priorities, like flushing toilets, yeah, tell us that in the work, the two to three work sessions we've had.
We, we, we made that...
And generally, what happens when you cannot flush a toilet, what has happened traditionally in the last few years, federal mandates allow people to go in and fiber optic through neighborhoods in our streets where we have put sewer, as we've done in this neighborhood. So what happens is, if the fiber optics, when they're boring, hits a water line, we know immediately, water's coming out of the ground. We don't know when they go through a sewer line until something happens, like this lady was saying, that sewer is backing up. Then we need to run in there, and we need to check with a camera those lines to see if something's penetrated that sewer line. That's generally what happens, because the infiltration of heavy rains will get into those holes and back it up in that particular house. That generally tells us the area where we're having an issue with more than likely something that has penetrated through a sewer line. So we need to get out there, and we need to check this with a camera and see what's going on on her street.
That all sounds good. The money, we budget, we budget this money all the time like this, nothing has changed. The money comes in, yeah, if there's a disaster, that's any year and every year, we do a budget. We've had two meetings on that, that's came, that's came up every time. I know my district, I wouldn't put anything on the district, on the Capitol that was not needed and needed to be pushed up, had meetings with the, with the city engineer about it. Yeah, she may be referring to a sidewalk that got pushed back, this is drainage. Drainage should never be pushed back. And I was willing to take all this other stuff off, and the money's there, when we budgeted and balanced everything, it was all there. So therefore, this is drainage, the road's worse, the mayor probably hadn't even driven down there to see how bad it is. The houses flood, people's houses that are flooding, that should always come first when it's for money, to drainage, to try to protect them from doing that again. So that is a priority, should be there, and the 348,000, 348,000 is not gonna make or break this budget with all the cuts before this meeting and now. So that's just, that's all personal, it's all personal, that's all it is. And it's sad that personal, personality, person will, will come first over, over to people. And I never voted against anybody's drainage projects in any, any district, it'd always come first. Steve had a drainage project in Woodbridge, they should have had that 10 years ago. I was all for that, never, never said anything about that. Drainage should always come first, and that's it, and that's why I'm fine with taking everything off of there, so.
I think with the young lady, what she said, I don't deal with sewer bagging up in my house. I don't deal with a flood issue. But it's amazing how we can sit up here and make excuses. Anytime, anybody in construction, let me say this, anytime anybody in construction, I just had a gas line move, they contact the water department, they contact fiber optic. The water department is the city of Hammond. All these departments, they contact. If you have any issue, the sewer, you gonna find out. If you don't find out tomorrow, you gonna find out next month. So this lady ain't just moved in there. This lady been dealing with sewer issues, and don't nobody know, when you got sewer issues, the first thing you do is call out a company, not knowing that you done paid this company, I'm gonna say $1,300, $1,500, because I know, because they been going on in my district, and found out it's always been a city issue. Yeah, we had the money to take care of it. District 3 still having sewer issues. We still having bag up in certain people's house. That woman ain't have no idea that she can come up here and speak of that. But now that she got opportunity to know, so, no, Ms. Gonzalez, you not gonna hear it. Mayor Pete, you not gonna hear it. She been having problems, but now that you heard it, and you still tell her, no, we not gonna do it. That's what she heard. She didn't hear nothing, oh, we can take care of it, we can look at that next month. If you look at this agenda right now, we sure got money for the recreational ride in a brand new vehicle. Now, this is what we're finna vote on tonight. That's not important. This year budget, we bout to vote on a vehicle, $46,000, that go my sidewalk right there. $46,000, same $46,000. I was willing to get the money out of District 3 to help the lady out, because guess what? She say she deal with a flood two times. If you got a heart, if you got passion, 300, what, how much, how much was the money? It's the man.
348,000.
$348,000. Help the lady out. But the mayor just one person. The councilman, we supposed to work together. Kip sit there and cut stuff out his district, the first one. Call me, have me to cut stuff out the district. I got a whole list of stuff I wanted. The engineer never met with us, so that's why I make it seem like we got so much. We never had a conversation with him. But how could Kip be willing to cut out of his district, and I'm willing to cut out of my district? Yeah, I cut last year. Since, talk about last year, 500, 500-some thousand dollars to do a road, Minnesota Parkway, guess what I did? Cut it out, the budget. Guess what? Everybody up here benefit from it. I could have used the whole $500,000. I took it out the budget, and everybody else up here benefit from it. So this time, and it was a blessing, the parish got involved. The parish gave us $250,000 to do that same project that I cut last year. So ain't no way that those folks, I don't know how many homes in there, how many homes in there?
About 40-something.
40-some homes.
Right now, yeah, about 40-something, they more laying the bill.
Paying taxes. And we can sit here and tell that many people, no, just like that?
Ma'am, what I hope you heard is that we're gonna get out there, and we're gonna put a camera through that line and see what's going on in that sewer line.
Oh, she gone, it's the mayor. She gone.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, she gone.
Well, I, I, like I said, Andre, can I, can I bring up, vote it down, item one more time?
Yeah, but there's already a motion on 23.
Okay.
There's a motion second to override the veto on item 23, which is the sidewalk project for Haskins Alley between West Louisa, West Street, and White Street.
Well, can we put that one on hold?
I'll consider my vote if you bring it up last.
Can, can, we can, we can always put my ass on hold. I, I'd rather... We can, we can always put mine's on hold, I, I, I'd rather for his to pass, we can put mine's on hold.
So let me ask, so let me ask you this, do you want to withdraw the motion, Councilman?
Yes, I withdraw the motion.
And you withdraw the second?
Second, yeah.
All right, so, the motion to override the mayor's veto on item twenty-three is been, is withdrawn?
Yes.
And, and I'm, I'm taking off my five hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of, of Capitol A projects because the main one out of those four are the, the drainage, which affects the road as well too, so the drainage. And so that's the one that I'm, I'm, I'm all about needing to get done, and then Devon's forty-five thousand, I mean, that's actually, you know, almost six hundred thousand dollars for one project that affects, you know, actually, it's, it's probably forty when I light it, but it's all the other ones down there, it's whole area, so I mean, it's probably seventy houses. So, that, that, that's what's important, drainage, and I just can't see how anybody could vote against that after it was already a four-one vote originally, in favor of this, and now, and now it's somehow changed to three. So, I'd like to make a motion, uh-
You want to reconsider-
Yeah, I like to, yeah.
A motion to reconsider the mayor's veto on item number thirty?
Yes.
Just that one?
Just that one.
Just that one?
Yes.
So we got to see now, I got to see how y'all vote, so.
We gotta have second first.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the table to reconsider the item, the mayor's, override the mayor's veto on item number thirty?
Are we reconsidering, and then we have to-
You gotta reconsider.
Can we do a motion, how about, can we do a motion to reconsider and override, put them together?
If you want to make that motion, Sam, motion to reconsider and override.
Yes, sec.
Okay, so the motion is to reconsider and override the mayor's veto, item number thirty, which is the-
Number thirty, the-
Drainage project for Al Ida Drive.
So Sam was the first, and-
First.
And Kip seconded the motion to reconsider, is that correct?
Yes.
Number-
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Councilman Wells?
Aye.
And Councilman Divatario?
Aye. I, I want to thank the council support for this, it means a lot to my district, and that's what I care about, no matter what, what they feel about me, but I, I really appreciate y'all taking my district first, and I appreciate it, and the houses in there, we're really, we'll really be happy with this, so, thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Let me just add, it was very helpful to get a lot more context in understanding what a problem it was, because it has never been told to us, just for everyone to understand, how bad of a problem it is.
Well, I, I want to just say is, I've been talking about that road for about four or five years now, and the reason the road has been so messed up is because of the drainage, one and other main factor.
Did a good job passionately advocating for your district tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's why he up here to represent his district. So, Andre, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the forty-five thousand dollars, it went toward Sam's project, I just want to make sure.
Well, I don't know if it's going toward that project, but that project for the Al Ida is in, is now in the budget. So if there's no other, so, Councilman Andrews, you can call for any other motions, if there's no motions to override vetoes on the other items, then there's no motions, and you move on to the next item.
I'm good.
You good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move forward. All right, where am I? Number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance, amend the code of ordinances regarding prohibition on persons under the age of twenty-one in standalone bars and nightclubs, Councilman Andrews?
Okay, we've taken public hearing on this item. I'll say this. I had a conversation with a young lady on, who called through her father on the phone, and she laid her case out to me. We had a decent conversation, no screaming and hollering, anything like that. And through this process, she gave me something else to think about. I've had several encounters with other things, I received different information, like some information I passed off to Andre the other day to, to look at in this process. But I'd just like to say one thing, too. Guy stood up here and said that he thinks my heart was in the right place. To serve my constituents and the city of Hammond, my heart was always in the right place.
That's right.
Always. When you moving through certain things, other things come back to your remembrance. A town hall meeting I had here with my constituents that live in this neighborhood, other conversations that I've had, that you put in the back of your mind and you don't remember, but it sparks an interest and it comes back to your remembrance of things that you've discussed with others. A comment was made to me that I, I must hate bars. I never said that I hated bars. All I was looking at was the, the quality of life, and I understand how everyone that stood up here and said, you're eighteen years old, you go fight for your country, you're eighteen years old, you can do this. I'm a history teacher, and you can go back and look in history, and I promise you, the same debate that we're having right now, they was having that debate then, especially when they was enacting their draft. Mothers didn't want to see their kids, sons go off to fight, it been the same thing. So to twist certain things and say that I hate bars is a total lie. Now, I've been restricted to things that I can say due to the fact that I'm being sued. I've already, I haven't disrespected you, and I'm asking for the same respect. All right, again. Okay. Anyone else have a public comment that you want to make? Because I might, I'm thinking, considering taking his advice. Anyone?
Yes, I do. I want to thank you for bringing it up, and Kip is a school teacher. I used to own a barroom, uh, two bands, twenty-one and under twenty-one. And the barroom owners know what goes with it, it's a lot. And one thing about kids, kids, they tell what they do. Kip, at the school, Hammond High, where he work at, the kids saying they pay extra to get into the barroom, underage. I don't want nobody underage in my barroom, it want enough money in the world, because I know what come with it, if any one of those kids would have got hurt. And, it's amazing that everybody else can come up with something, put it on the agenda, don't get all this feedback, don't get all these threats. And this man come from his heart to talk about this. And, from me to him to all of us up here, we don't all agree with one another, and we all have issues. But, the threats and everything else, and I just found out tonight, that I'm a part of the lawsuit. And, the disrespect, we say what we want to who we want. It's a shame for Hammond, America, to be so divided. We should all, all want a better Hammond. We should all should know how to respect one another, we should all know how to treat one another. It's amazing how we let people with money control poor people. Everybody want a chance, everybody deserve a chance, you all know what I'm talking about. People with the money been controlling everything. The door is open for everybody, I tell everybody, if this man can do it, this man can do it, vice versa. We just all have to work together, however this turn out, it's turn out, but it shouldn't be what President Kip had to be pounded on, is something he believe in. All of us can come up with stuff, ain't get nobody opinion, advice, this was on his heart, this what he said, he know what he see. I don't know how many school teachers we have in here, school teachers don't make that much money, but we have opportunity that we can save somebody, it all started with the mayor. About the barrooms, about the hours, but yet, you can sit here and point fingers at one or two people. We can vote on this here right now, was it a pass or fail? It gonna get vetoed, all this here noise y'all been making, the mayor still gonna veto it, all y'all are friends, all y'all work together. But look with all this here disturbance that you done caused. You know, I'm gonna say this, I've been reading the Bible twice a day. Not for nobody in here, for myself, to keep me in order. I should be able to read with peace, I should be able to live with peace. It ain't been peaceful at all. From the time I got up here till right now, I'm still dealing with the same problem, trying to get stuff solved for everybody. It shouldn't be this way, I shouldn't have to deal with frogs in my stomach or none of that. We should be able to talk to one another, talk to me the way you want me to talk to you, respect me just like you want me to respect you. It's sad. We the only two being sued up here. Oh, my God. So, see, see how we can just talk when we want to talk? But anytime, anytime, well, I'm through with it, thank you, President Kip.
You have something you want to say, Paul?
Yeah, so, I, some of you may know, my, I have a family member who owns a, a small portion of a bar, so Louisiana ethics rules require that I let you know before I make a comment about this. I've also talked to the Louisiana Board of Ethics to make sure where I stand on this, I feel comfortable that I, I am able to vote on this because there are at least nine bars that this affects, it's not solely affecting something that a family member has an economic interest in. So, that's the disclosure. What I want to say substantively, and what matters. Sure, what I want to say substantively, a couple of things, but particularly as to this, I think that there's a way, if there are establishments that are breaking the rules, we have ordinances on the books of what those rules are, there are state laws of what those rules are. Our city ordinances, I looked at them, I printed them, we have a lot of tools to put an establishment in check for when they're doing something wrong. There's been a lot of comment about all the bars, restaurant, I mean, some of the things people are talking about, it applies to restaurants that are happening. I mean, we aren't, we're, we're throwing everyone into a, a big group, and I think more importantly, we should be looking at what particular establishments are breaking the rules on the books, our books and the state books. There's vehicles both through the state, through the city, there's law enforcement, the chief's here, we can talk to him about that, but there are ways to be doing this that specifically reels this problem in. History, Hammond has a history of, of incidents at bars, it's a long history, I've talked to council members who sat in this chair before me. They use the tools that are in our ordinances, why aren't we doing that? If we have certain problems, there's multiple avenues for people, council members, law enforcement, the mayor, there's multiple avenues to address the actual problems that we're having, both with the city and ATC. So I would like to see us target things instead of potentially causing a backlash in the city, affecting sales tax, I do think it affects the population of southeastern. I know that's not popular to say, but we have sports, we have people who go, you know, they go to the bars after the games, we have, you know, I was eighteen once in the city of Hammond. This is something, it's a culture, it's not a bad culture, there are bad things that happen in the bar culture for forty-year-olds. We all know a forty or fifty-year-old who's done something really stupid at a bar, right, we all know that, and there's eighteen-year-olds that make mistakes as well. And so I think we need to be specific as to the repercussions of what, of what we're doing, and we have tools that we should be following for that.
And that's, in the last two meetings that I've had with Andre, that's what we've been discussing. Other alternatives that have been brought up and things to look into. So, that was my, gonna be my proposal, that we continue to look at this with the last information that I provided to Andre, because like I said in, in the previous meeting, that I was coming and come up with a solution that I think everybody was going to be satisfied with. And that's what I've been working on with Andre. So.
I just, I just wanted to say something, uh, you know, Councilman Andrews, you know, introduced a, a topic like this that brought a lot of light to things, and I, and I think, you know, after, you know, continuing thinking and listening, watching things, really, you know, the, the problem here is a lot of mismanagement. And, you know, we hear a lot of things, I hear a lot of things for, you know, the crowds outside the bars and everything else, and, you know, the underage drink, all these kids, whatnot, or not, not, you know, not doing things, you know, uh, uh, the right way, and, you know, at the end of the day, that, in different administrations, that, that did not, that did not happen like that. Things are a lot more order with things. I'm not saying that one way or another, where I'm at, but, you know, the problem is, is that it's the, it's the, the aftermath of the, the kids, after-hours, you know, drinking, throwing things everywhere, whatnot, and I, I, I feel that there was a better management before, and those rules that we had on paper were actually enforced a lot better in different administrations. And right now, I think that's a common denominator, is that there's things on the books to keep all this in order without doing that, but they're not being followed at times, and we hear it all, I mean, I'm not sitting here thinking that the bar owners are gonna say, you know, anything that happened, miss happened. I mean, that, that's, that's, I wouldn't expect them to say that, but there, there's all kind of issues like that that we hear about, and I think by introducing something and bringing a topic up, I think it showed, you know, it, it highlights some may issues that we have that we need to look at to improve on. So, that's all, that's all I want to say, I mean, but it's, it's definitely some, some issues that we have that if it was managed a little different, not, you know, that as a city, I think it would improve and make a lot of people a lot more happier.
You know, like I said before, we have a state law in place, eighteen to enter, twenty-one to, twenty-one to drink, I think we have lots of resources, well, you know, whether it be ATC or Hammond Police, or Councilwoman Gonzalez brought up other, other resources and other avenues. You know, I think this is a, a solvable problem, I think you wind up punishing a lot of good for, for a few bad apples, and that's not what we're about. So, you know, keep this, keep it, keep it, keep it simple, keep it focused, uh, you know, we, we're a good, we're a good town overall. And, uh, we just gotta, we just gotta tighten up one of those few bad apples, that's all, I mean, golly, I've been, I've been in Hammond since nineteen seventy-four, and, you know, yeah, the downtown's the downtown, it's always gonna be the downtown, that's what makes this place great, I think somebody mentioned it earlier. People come back here for homecoming, been gone for fifty years, and they come back and they reminisce, uh, yeah, let's not, let's not kill that for a couple of bad apples.
Chief Berger on Hammond Police Department, not gonna say much, Councilman Andrews, I want to say that you and I were able to have a great conversation, I think we, we definitely had a pretty long and lengthy conversation on, kind of my perspective of, of some of this. There are things on the books, I think years ago, when the no smoking- I think years ago, when the no smoking in the bar ordinance started a process where it was okay, they can smoke within 10 feet. Because I think the ordinance even talks about you can smoke 10 feet from a city building, so on, so forth. Is that, that kind of convoluted the city ordinance as far as open container outside, right outside the building, whether people could smoke on, you know, on a patio or a way they could not smoke on a patio, so on, so forth. So did the enforcement of open containers, especially close to the bars, kind of get lax? Look, that's something that happened years, even prior to myself being the police chief, and has probably continued on. One thing I'll say, and once again, like I said, this is a lot of things that myself and Councilman Andrews talked about at length. We're not gonna go on everything we talked about, but I will tell you all that I've been meeting and talking to the bar owners. We are gonna start enforcing the open container. As the new semester gets started, we're gonna be enforcing the public passage with the people that are just hanging out on the sidewalks and loitering. They're bringing alcohol, they're standing on the corners, they're drinking. And that's causing problems too. So I do wish y'all would have reconsidered and added two people for my downtown district, but, you know, it's up for y'all to decide. We are gonna try to allocate some extra people to be able to do that. So we do have things in place. All the bar owners that I've spoke with understand the initiatives that the police department's gonna be implementing. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and enforce it. There're gonna be some people that are gonna like it. There's gonna be some people that aren't gonna like it. But if, if enforcement is something that we need, then that's something we're gonna do. As far as the 18 to 21-year-olds, and once again, I expressed this to Councilman Andrews. My concern is, is we have a certain group of bars that we're gonna eliminate it. It's gonna push it to the restaurants. It's gonna push it to pop-up clubs. Even Hammond Union of Police Hall, they had these pop-up clubs that were gonna be happening and they ended up canceling them. So I, I think there's a lot of things that would happen and come to it. That we, this could potentially cause bigger issues for us. Because we do have several restaurant bars that they could just go to. So we just push them from one place to another. I'd love to work with, with you, Councilman Andrews, on some of the ideas that you would have as far as some of the things we can do to step it. I don't think keeping a 16-year-old or hearing a 16-year-old saying he went to the bar, this ordinance would change that. Let's be honest, these kids today are pretty damn good with fake IDs and computers and everything else. And they've been using that since I was in college and they were trying to get into bars. But some of the things that we do plan on doing in the future is I'll be meeting with every bar owner and their staff. I will have no problem at all coming here and calling them out to you all if they refuse to meet with me and don't wanna sit down with me and my team. And we're gonna be doing checks. I've talked to the ATC board, the new supervisor over there. He's gonna be assisting us on some operations that we're gonna be going on and doing in the city. But I think it starts with the conversation of, hey, there is a problem and we need to address it. And Hammond Police Department's gonna do everything we can with the laws that are currently on the books to address it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. I'm gonna make a motion at this time to withdraw this item from the agenda. And I will be resubmitting a new proposal once me and Andre go through some of these other items. And some of the stuff was mentioned by the chief. I'm not gonna say what it was, but some of the stuff that he just mentioned is also on some of the paperwork that I've given Andre. Again, let me say this for the record. I sat up here and there was a young guy that came up here and spoke tonight. He's right. Kids could say any, kids will say anything. I got that. I done been young myself too. But if you're hearing it more than once in different groups, it's something that you have to look into. And God forbid, God forbid, that it knocks on your door. Then you come crying. You want somebody to do something when it's knocking on your door. But when it's not knocking on your door, you don't care about it. I've seen people since I've been sitting in this spot. Then when you wanted something and you came to me and we worked together, I was the best thing on two feet. The best piece of sliced bread you ever had. But if it's something that you don't agree with, that I'm doing, I'm the worst thing that it could ever live. And one thing that touched me the most was two conversations that I had in this process. The young lady that called me, 'cause I know her dad, and Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Touched me the most. But what really got me was a conversation that came to me in passing. I watched the council meeting that night. And when you said that there had been threats made against your life, not one person sitting on that board with you, not one person in the audience showed any compassion to you. We living in a dangerous time. Two people just got killed in another state because a person impersonated being a police officer came to their house and killed them. I don't wish bad on nobody. And like I said before, in eight years, I could count the times on one hand, I took their gun to the courthouse. But since this started, I take it everywhere I go. Because I don't know who gonna be crazy or whatever they gonna try to do. You can do what you wanna do to me, but if you put my family in harm's way, I can't tell you what I would do. 'Cause I couldn't tell what you would do. All I was trying to do was preserve life. And I see how adamant some people are who don't care about it. But I'm withdrawing this item. When I get back with Andre, I'm gonna make another proposal. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Mr. Lisa, before you call that, call, call, call for that vote to withdraw. I do apologize the fact of being able to, I have talked with some other folks as well. And I appreciate their professionalism in talking with me. And when I say other folks, I mean some other bar owners. I appreciate that.
Councilman Wells.
Withdraw.
I'm withdrawing this motion.
Okay, okay.
To bring something back. Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Final adoption number three.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances Regarding Alcoholic Beverages in the Parks.
Okay, as it was mentioned earlier when we was talking to Michelle and some other items and something that Councilwoman Gonzalez brought up, we're gonna table this.
Why don't you call for public comment, Mr. Andrews?
Okay.
Does anybody else?
Anybody else have anything they wanna say on this item? We're gonna table this item to iron out some of the wording in here.
So I'm understanding that you all want me to work on a revised ordinance based on the public comment and circulate that.
Yes, and then when it is introduced, to have that hyperlinked so that people can see what's being proposed that's different. We do the original and.
So then, so the next would be final adoption. You wanna come back up on final adoption? You wanna come back up?
We've talked about it a lot.
And it'll be circulated.
Yeah, perfect.
So let me ask a question on this, Mr. Andre. Y'all might can help me out. So this alcohol in the park, is this for one park or is this for all the parks? That's gonna be just for one park.
So, well, well, the way it's written now, the only exemption would be for parks within that downtown development district.
It's technically three parks.
So it's more than just one park.
It's technically Kate Square Railroad Park, which I know people say is not a park, but it legally is a park, and Morrison Alley, which doesn't seem like a park, but it technically is.
Pavilion, if that opens, might.
Or the pavilion, if that is legally a park.
With the way it's, the revisions drafted, is anything within the downtown development district?
Okay, but I don't want no drinking in Mooney Park period.
That's already the rule.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
Just so you're clear, the rule now is no drinking in parks. The only way you drink in parks is if the mayor approves it and you approve it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's a motion to table and have a revised.
Second.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
New business number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to remove unused outdated definitions from the city's Unified Development Code, or UDC. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, no opposition recommends adoption, four to zero. Charles Barsher.
As I explained earlier, this is, more or less.
Charles, hold up, let them move out so we can hear. Go ahead, Charles, I'm sorry.
No problem. As I explained earlier, this is more or less a housekeeping measure designed to remove some unused and/or redundant definitions from a Unified Development Code. We're asking for the council's approval.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Yeah, could we, could we get somebody here from Planning and Zoning, Charles, to help explain these, all this here, please, for the next council meeting? Can we have someone from Planning and Zoning?
This is to, this is to vote on it.
We voting on it?
Wait, we're on the.
New business final adoption.
Oh, wait a minute, this is the new, we're on a new business final adoption ordinance to remove unused outdated definitions, this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, well, Charles, explain.
So that document that was hyperlinked that you should have in your binder, council member, is a list of definitions that are, they appear as definitions in the Unified Development Code, but nowhere else. There's no, no rules in Unified Development Code, no actual codes that use these definitions. In a few cases, there are some definitions that appear twice. So what this measure does is remove all of those unused or redundant definitions. I think there might be a little bit of confusion about the next introduction, which, which does something similar, but it's more specific to group housing. And I'll explain that later.
Okay, well, look, this acquisition system, our system. Explain this one to me.
What would you like me to explain?
On page one. You see where I'm at?
Yes.
Okay, explain the acquisition system or the system. Explain that.
This is a definition that appears only in the definitions and that does not treat it anywhere else in the Unified Development Code.
Advertising display area. Explain that to me.
Same thing. These are all definitions that appear only in the definitions and aren't addressed anywhere else in the actual Unified Development Code.
Adult dance hall.
The same explanation. Every, every one of these definitions appears only in the definitions and does not appear anywhere else in the Unified Development Code.
So all, all the city councilmen understand everything on here?
Yes, all 18 pages, I think it is.
Yeah, so the city councilman, so, hold up, Charles. So I didn't make the last meeting. So what I'm saying, I just wanted to make sure, everybody up here understand all the definitions that's on here? How many definitions we have on here?
I don't have an actual count, but it's 18 pages worth.
There's a good bit on here.
Sure.
And, and I don't, you know, I don't think it ever is, I've said it 100 times, but I don't think it ever is good to not, especially since we have a city planner. There's no reason why the city planner shouldn't be here. You know, if there's any questions or concerns with the council, since they're voting on to take this in and change it and update it. I mean, I was gonna try to meet with her, I didn't have a chance to meet with her beforehand, got tied up. But I went to the meeting, you know, the planning and zoning, but I still have a lot of, you know, questions on things. And I definitely think, you know, anything, you know, that's gonna edit or change UDC, it would be nice to have the head of that department at a, at a meeting that we're gonna make a decision on.
I was just explaining to the mayor that Frankie has volunteered to be at the next meeting because she imagines there'll be a lot of questions about group housing. I know that's been something that I know Councilman Andrews and I have spoken about. I think it's come up at several other council meetings. So if the council wanted to table this until the next meeting, so she could discuss both this ordinance and, and the ordinance that's being introduced tonight specifically for group homes, I think that would be fine.
Well, remember, this ordinance is strictly for definitions that are not used anywhere in the UDC.
Not that they don't exist, or they're not that they're actual things, it's just they're not in our laws. So we don't need to define words that are not actually in our laws. That's all it's doing, is cleaning up 19 pages of definitions that aren't used. But I'm fine with tabling it.
But it's easy to say that, and if I'm sitting here asking, I'm trying to see your title, Mr. Charles, what's your title?
Director Administration.
Okay, administration. Okay, but I'm sitting here asking him and he telling me the definition. And I'm saying, and honestly, I really didn't have time to go through. I'm not gonna go through all 19 pages, I ain't gonna lie. And so if I'm asking a question, I would like to always get an answer to the question. And so he couldn't answer it. And I know I wasn't here, and forgive me for not being here at the last council meeting. You know, we just need to get a.
So if you, if you look at the, just to explain, if you look at the first two definitions, the first one's abandoned vehicles and the second one is abandoning a vehicle. Very similar, but nowhere else outside of these definitions do the Unified Development Code address abandoned vehicles or abandoning a vehicle. It could be that they use different terminology in other places. So what Frankie's trying to do here is remove anything that appears only in the definitions, but, but isn't treated anywhere in the code. Or if there are multiple definitions that are similar, but one of those definitions appears in the code and the others don't, she's removing the redundant definitions. But like I said, if you, if we'd like for her to come to the next meeting, she's already volunteered to be here for the purpose of discussing, discussing the similar ordinance for group housing.
Yeah, I think that'll be fine.
Yeah.
Now, thank you. Okay, well, excuse me, let me get a motion to table it.
Motion to table.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Introduction of an ordinance, number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to remove and amend unused outdated definitions and to establish specific use standards for group living and care facilities within the city's Unified Development Code, the UDC. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, no opposition recommends adoption, three to zero.
As always, say for an introduction, this is, this is the public notice that if introduced tonight, there will be a public hearing on this matter at the next council meeting. Councilman Wells, to your questions before, this particular ordinance, I think, better represents what Frankie's trying to accomplish. Here, the definitions that are being eliminated are part of this section, they relate to group housing. So she's addressing these specific definitions related to group housing, and then she's introducing new, specific use-oriented definitions. So you may kind of see how the two kind of fit together. We're removing a definition that is outdated, that isn't used, that is redundant. We may be replacing it with a new definition that's clearer. And in this particular case, is actually adheres more to state and federal law. In the other section, since there were so many definitions, she felt it would be confusing if she tried to present those the same way. They occur in various places throughout the Unified Development Code. She just wanted to be able to give you a list of all of those unused or outdated or redundant definitions. Again, this is just an introduction. We're hoping that the council will introduce it tonight so we can have that public hearing and a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, so when we say group living, so if I can ask now or just wait till later?
If you have specific questions, I would say, why don't we wait until the next meeting when you can ask our city planner?
So should we be introducing this now or wait to table this here matter too?
This is just the introduction. If it's introduced tonight, that would allow her to come and we could have a public hearing. She could address questions or concerns at that, at that meeting.
Okay, yeah, 'cause what I'm, I am gonna go to her office and meet with her because this group living and care facility, it gonna affect District Three a whole lot.
I think it affects every, every district. What, and she can speak a whole lot more eloquently on this than I can, but my understanding is what she's done, I think very cleverly, is she's identified specific uses that are allowed. So right now, our current group housing, group living codes are. So right now, our current group housing, group living, um, codes are, are in some ways vague, in some ways they discriminate, they, they don't comply with state and federal law. This does. This, this actually provides a more structured and, and law compliant version of our codes. But I, I would advise introducing it tonight so that any questions you might have, you can, you can field, if any questions the public might have, can, we can be fielded before the next meeting or at the next meeting where she'll be available to answer.
Charles, group living will affect District Three. Group living won't affect where you stay at. District Three don't have no overlay, District Three don't have no protection. So we sitting here talking about this here, it gonna affect District Three, 'cause right now, Councilman Andrew dealing with three houses right now, that somehow, nobody even know how they got there. And somehow, they still in operation, and then I'm seeing now that this group living, I don't wanna wake up the next morning, I got fifteen people standing right across the street from me.
What, what this ordinance is attempting to do is resolve those issues.
Okay, so are those three group homes shut down in Kip District?
No, they, they still function.
Pay attention to what's going on.
Has anything been done with it?
No, I was waiting till we got to this, to this point. I have, I have met with Ms. Frankie.
But if they're, they're not allowed, though, are they not allowed? I don't know why they still there.
They never received a permit or any license or anything to operate. So what I'm doing right now is following the process that they bringing in front of me.
The mayor can't shut it down? You can't shut it down, mayor?
Right, I've talked with Andre, and in the process of that, I'll be scheduling, uh, some people from the neighborhood to come in and give, uh, work, take their affidavit or whatever, if that's the right word to use in this. Just last week, I know, uh, the police was at one and arrested someone. Couple of weeks ago, they was at another one, the way they arrested someone. But I, I put it on the record that they don't need to be nowhere in District One due to the fact of the type of service that you're trying to provide for these folks, because in one, you could walk six hundred feet and get what you want. The other one, you could walk less than six hundred feet and still get what you want. So it's, it's defeating, it's defeating the purpose, but I'm gonna follow this process, and, uh, we're gonna schedule those with, with Andre. I got the people lined up, whenever we can get them in there so they can, um, make their statements. They could, uh, also show their videos of different things, so that way it'll be billing, billing the case.
Well, let me say this here for the record, for, for everybody to know. You don't have to have license to open up a lot of these houses and what they doing. So that's what a lot of people, see, we keep saying license, they don't have to have license. It all depends on what you call it. And so whatever they calling it, that's why they over, that's why they able to open these places up and don't have to have license. So we taking care of veterans. Anything they say, we taking care of disabled. We taking care, uh, when you let somebody out of jail. So this is what I'm learning, they don't have to have license for this. But it's definitely gonna affect District Three. If I wake up in the morning time, anybody in here can wake up the next day. If they not protected or overlay, they can wake up the next day and have fifteen people standing across the street from them. So we, we better really pay attention to where they can do this at. Steve Leon, for a prime example, look how that was taking place. And if Councilman Sam didn't push the issue, that would've took place, and they have to have license. But all, all these other facilities do not have to go through the state to do these things. So stop saying license now, because that will gonna throw you off. 'Cause Charles gonna say license, and you find out, you got fifteen people standing across the street from you, that they didn't even have to have license. So halfway houses, all these, all these terms that they use now, they going below the radar where they don't have to ask the state for nothing. So that's what taking place, so stop using the term license. And I'm talking, I noticed for a fact that it gonna affect the poor areas, 'cause those the only places that they can put these houses at. They can't put them in Villa West. They can't put them in HOAs. They can put them in the poor areas that's not protected. So, yes, Ms. Frankie, yes, we need to be here, because nobody up here, it gonna affect, but it definitely gonna affect District Three. And they don't have to have license for the record. They do not have to have license to open up these facilities.
So would you guys like to go ahead and introduce this item, 'cause she will be here at the next meeting?
I think it's important, 'cause you give public notice to people, we're gonna talk about it.
All right.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
So who we gonna talk about it now?
I mean, with Frankie and-
Yeah, the-
At the next meeting, if it's introduced, you'll have, it'll be on the public hearing agenda, and it'll be on the agenda for final adoption.
So we'll be voting on it the next council meeting?
You could, yeah, for final adoption.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Wells.
No.
Introduction of ordinance number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to request by Farah LaShura on behalf of High Park LLC and Edson Group Limited Partnership to annex the thirty-five acres of Lot 1D-1B on High Park Boulevard in the city's corporate limits in accordance with a survey by Andrew Fowler. Dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, the property is to be zoned I-L and located in District Three. The planning and zoning commission hearing, no opposition recommends adoption, three to zero. Charles.
Again, this is the introduction. If introduced tonight, we would have a public hearing on this matter at the next council meeting. Um, this is essentially an extension of a previous, um, approved annexation by the council. This is additional property to the east that would be annexed into the city limits, and it looks like we have a speaker here, too.
I was just introducing myself, I'm Farah LaShura with Encore Development, and I, we were just requesting thirty-five acres to be annexed into the city limits.
So, Mr. Charles, ask you a question, 'cause I think this, I brought this up early. Also, so annexing this into the city limits. So what all the city require to do for them to be annexed into the city?
My understanding is this is, this will be commercial property. Um, they're gonna have to bring service lines to connect to the nearest city sewer. Um, but this is to develop a, a commercial property for, um, for a company that's coming to Hammond.
So what the city have to do? So they gonna run they line to the city line? Okay, that's, that's my only question.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on this item?
With the annexation, do they know what is gonna be annexed in?
Yes, it's a, a commercial company, Altech, I believe. Do you wanna speak to that, or? Sure.
Altech was already annexed into the city.
Sir, excuse me, give us your name.
Encore Development, uh, twelve, fifteen eighteen Martin Strife. Uh, Altech was already annexed in, this is just the, the rest of the, the property to go into. It's, um, it's gonna be for commercial development, for, uh, distribution of businesses.
Anyone else have any, any questions on it? All right, thank you, sir. All right, pleasure to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Introduce.
Introduce.
You tired, huh?
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Resolution number three.
Resolution to approve Ventax located at one-one-nine East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-zero-one, to obtain an alcohol permit for a restaurant. The owner is Ventax LLC. Bento's.
For the record, yeah, it's Bento.
Bento.
I'm Ryan Oliphant, six-one-three, Susan Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. Uh, yeah, we're just looking to, uh, add the alcohol license to our restaurant um, so that we're able to offer a small cocktail menu and, um, some beer and wine to our patrons.
They've met all city requirements.
What is located in?
Right, right there.
What's located in?
Uh, we're located at, uh, one-nineteen East Thomas Street, uh, right next to Lou Macoffy, the old drugstore, kinda catty corner of Red White and Brew. Sweet Rolls was there before, yeah.
Place looks nice, Ryan did a good job in there, it looks real nice, so.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Um, I hope y'all been doing well, I've ate there, it was great, good food, everything else, so, pretty cool how y'all did the boxes in there, so.
Appreciate that, yeah, we've just been soft opening now, we're, uh, kind of waiting to get through this process. We're gonna do a big ribbon cut and then everything, um, should we move forward, so.
And you ain't inviting me over there, man?
It's coming. Got all your names on the list.
Okay, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Introduce.
No, it's-
It's approved, it's approved.
Everybody's sleepy.
No, I don't know him to get tired.
Second?
Yes. Councilman Andrews.
Stain.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye, yes.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye. Good luck.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of one twenty-twenty-five F-150 five-point-zero L crew cab two-dash-WD for the recreation department from Bill Hood Ford. Total price, forty-three thousand, three-seventy, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. State contract, four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-three-seven-nine-three. Charles.
Uh, this was a quest, a request that was approved, uh, by the council in the FY twenty-six budget. The amount that was approved was forty-six thousand, seventy-one dollars. Uh, and as you can see, they're actually spending less than that at forty-three thousand, three-seventy-seven. So we're asking the council to, uh, approve.
And I'm glad to see y'all finally buying from Hammond, so I like to see that, so, glad to see buying from Bill Hood, someone local.
Is there anyone from the public on this item? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Yeah, that's my sidewalk.
Yeah.
No.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number three.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an annual software support agreement with Tyler Technology Inc., Technologies Inc. for hardware and software services in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Charles Barsher.
This is in the IT department's budget that was approved by the council. Um, the reason this number looks bigger is because what we're trying to do here is we're trying to take several different contracts and put them all together. Um, that'll make it easier, um, going forward to manage a single contract as opposed to multiple contracts that start and stop at different times. It'll make it easier for budgeting purposes. Uh, Tyler Technologies, if you recall, is the company behind Munis, which drives our accounting system, our purchasing system. Um, we're in the process of adopting a new, uh, timekeeping software from Munis. This is really the backbone software that keeps the city up and running.
Anyone else have any questions on a particular item? Pleasure to council. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
So was this in the budget, Charles, for this year?
Yes, sir.
And how much was it, and how much was?
In the IT budget? Give me one second. I have to find, give me one second, I'm looking for it in the budget. So this would come under... I think we put this into equipment maintenance and repairs, which is three-hundred-and-thirty thousand is available for that.
All right, thank you.
Rick just confirmed by text, that's the right line item. Uh, Rick, our IT director, just confirmed by text, I was looking at the right, right line item, that's correct, three-thirty.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Leon. Councilman Andrews. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
A reminder, we'll be having a back, uh, back-to-school backpack giveaway, a supply giveaway at Hammond Westside. Melissa Stilly, school board, Jason Allah, principal of Hammond Westside, uh, the judge, and myself, city, us, will be giving school bags and supplies back to the kids before they go back to school this next Friday, August first.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Stanley.
Stanley Campbell, District One. Hey, first of all, I want to say thank you to the council and to the administration, uh, for what you guys came together to do for District Four and those guys, uh, on the Capitol Outlay Projects. Um, that's kind of what I was speaking on when I was talking about the budget being broken down, and to see it actually in action here today, you know what I mean? It made, made me feel good about it, and I'd like to see a lot more of that. Most of these people, when they come to these meetings, when the citizens come out here to voice their grievances, they don't care about the partisan politics that goes on in this room and in this chamber and in the administration, they don't care about the relationships. They want, they want the problem fixed. And I, I, I hope we maintain this level of momentum and working together moving forward through the next year. But it was nice to see. But one of the other things that I wanna break, I wanna bring to the council, um, I wanted to ask the mayor, too, hey, how do we go about, this is the second time that I've seen the police chief at one of these meetings. Uh, this is the second one, and I'm happy about that, don't get me wrong, I'm happy to see him here, I think he should be here. But what needs to happen to have him here? What, what was the difference today versus other issues? Okay, so the agenda that was brought up, I asked in February that President Kip, uh, put it on the agenda, certain issues of an incident that happened on February the eighteenth, that the police chief can come before the council and answer some questions from the public, and that hasn't happened to date. So it's a little frustrating showing up here again today to see the police chief here for a second time for alcohol. All right, it sets the wrong precedent. It sets a precedent that we care more about alcohol and bars than the loss of life. So I wish that's something that we can change. Is there something, is there something that I'm missing or a document that I need to file to get him here? Because I've been, I've been asking for it since February.
He right behind you.
Well, I'm, I'm not speaking of things that are under, I'm just speaking from, it wasn't under investigation then. He's here today, but my whole point is, my whole point is, anytime something like that is put on the agenda, President Kip put it on the agenda and he didn't show up. And I understand you guys have a precedent where there's issues between the council and the administration. I spoke before earlier and I said, the people and the citizens, they don't care about your relationships with the council or with the council, with the mayor's. Hold on one second, Mr. Mayor. I didn't, I didn't hear you. I, I, I get that, I get that, but I don't do business this way. This is the people's house right here, this is where the people's business is done. Uh, I don't do the back channel, back alley deals, I like to, yeah, no, that's, that's not what I mean. You gotta grow thicker skin. Mr. Mayor, you gotta grow thicker skin. But the whole point here is, man, hey, we can't set the precedent to let people believe that we care more about alcohol than loss of life. There's been a lot of situations where police brutality has happened, and we haven't addressed it. We still haven't addressed it, still to this day, it hasn't been addressed. And I know it's been sent up to, uh, the Attorney General's Office, that one situation, that's only one situation. There's probably four or five of them that hasn't been dealt with, and we haven't heard from the police chief. He hasn't came here and spoken about it, and we've asked openly. I'm assuming that he watches these, these YouTube videos, I'm assuming that you do. You've been here, and I've asked multiple times, and me and other people have asked, you know, can the police chief come and speak to the citizens? And it hasn't happened, I'm a little frustrated by that.
I would just like to address what's brought up. Um, let's be clear why department heads don't come here anymore. Um, Councilman Andrews, you always say, uh, everybody should treat each other with respect and dignity in the beginning of your meetings and with your prayers, correct? Um, that has not happened. Department heads quit coming because of the way that we were treated by council members, um, on this board. The constant attacks, trust me, if anybody understands and sympathizes with you about threats because of things that happened in this council chambers, it's me. I have been drug across the coal, I have had one thing after another happen, and, Mr. President, you have allowed that to happen. President, you have allowed that to happen. I kind of jokingly laughed when I heard Robert's Rules of Order earlier because they only apply when it's convenient to apply. Department heads don't come anymore because of the way they've treated us, because the way that they talk to us. If you'd like to know my statement on something, I've made public statements on that. What I'm not going to do is come here and just get outright abused, harassed, and have people say things, call you a liar, call you a cheat, call you a racist, call you everything under the sun, and a council president allow that to happen. There's been emails that have been sent to members of this council asking y'all to stop or asking it to be stopped. But that's why department heads don't come anymore. It's not because we don't want to come. I'd love to come and have educated conversation. There are some things we can discuss, there are some things we cannot. What I'm not going to do is sit here and just get abused by members of this council. The mayor has allowed us not to come because of that. He represents us, the city administrator represents us, and they bring things forward. That's what it comes down to. If you don't believe me, I have the list of all the times that they have attacked me personally, have attacked other department heads, and I'd be more than willing to get it to you. You can go back and look at the videos. Councilman Wells always says, good thing about it, it's there for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. It is, 100%. So, that's why department heads don't come.
Councilman Andrew, could I speak? Oh, no, don't shake your head now. That's the problem now. Don't shake your head now. He got up here, he called my name. You know why he here? The television, the news. That's why he here tonight. That's why he was here the last time. They not going to see it. Tell me where Councilman Wells be lying at. That's why he here.
He's here because Kip Andrews asked the police to...
And I thank you. The cameras, whenever the cameras going to come around, he going to always come out.
Stanley Campbell, District 1. Hey, my comments weren't meant to bring this level of discomfort, but the frustration, I understand the police chief's frustration, but at the same time, I started off at the outset stating that when the citizens have the issue, they can care less what the partisan politics is happening in this room. I understand the police chief probably went through something with the council, you know, and with the administration. But the people still expect the police chief and everybody up here to do their jobs. We expect them to be here. So, in certain situation, we need the subject matter expert to be the subject matter experts. All right, you guys aren't police officers. Most of the time when we ask these police officer questions, you guys give us something from the hip, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate it, and you guys are attempting to answer that the best of your knowledge. But the people want to hear from the subject matter experts that our taxpaying dollars are paying for. So, whether he's frustrated with what's going on with the council, it should be required of him to show up here and speak to the constituents.
Protect the people.
We have any other council report?
Yeah, I want to say a couple things. One thing is, you know, they, yeah, all of them should be here when it's, when there's topics, and, yeah, you can, they all sounds good about this and that, but they're directed to not come to this meeting by the administration. Every other administration had them, they used to come here. So, they directed because they got caught up in the middle of things when we asked them questions. So, they can say what they want to do. Secondly, I want to thank the council for voting to get the drainage done over there in Alida, and it meant a lot to District 4 in that area. And I really appreciate y'all. But I also want to make sure that y'all see and remember how the mayor vetoed a drainage project that had the money to be there, and shows you. And it's really sad and disappointing that his personal whatever against me, he wanted to take it out on the people of Hammond with the drainage. Of all things veto, vetoed the drainage. So, with houses flooding. But he don't know nothing about it, but that's fine. But it's really sad. So, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else have a council report?
Yes, I do, but I'm not going to talk loud at all. I want to thank you, President Kip, for everything you tried to do and what you trying to do with the alcohol. So, thank you for that. Mr. Andre, I would like for you to help me come up with an ordinance, 18 and under, less, they need to be out for so long. So, I don't know, for the kids that's 18 and under, at a certain time, they need to be at home. So, I know Amy is working on this here.
Or curfew.
Yeah. See, that's all I got to do is get it started. Y'all going to take it from there. So, I would like for us to come up with something to try to help save the youth and keep them from getting in trouble.
Is it Councilman Will?
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
Councilman Leon? Ms. Julie?
Glenn Galbraith, I'm the attorney for the Civil Service Board.
Julie Martin, Hammond Civil Service Board Secretary. I know there was some talk at the...
Ms. Julie, talk in the mic, please, so they can hear you.
At the budget sessions, and then I think there was some talk at the June 24th meeting about my salary, and I guess some confusion as to what I get paid. And, you know, it's kind of like Mr. Campbell said, the public sees this. So, I don't think everybody had the whole picture. So, I sent y'all everything, and if y'all have any questions, I do not get a car allowance. I have never gotten a car allowance from this city.
Who said that, ma'am? The administration, right? Common denominator. Common denominator of all these issues is administration and four over.
I just want to say this. I know there was a lot of numbers put out there, but we came before this council, and y'all have the dates, I believe it was in May, and y'all set an amount, and it's a state law. And why it got brought up, or why it was budgeted for a full-time employee, I can't answer that. But I never received that amount of money. And I gave y'all my W-2s. I've given you all my check stubs. So, I mean, somehow we need to make this right because I don't want the public thinking that I got money that I did not deserve.
That's what I'm curious about. What is the problem? I miss what the problem is. You, your amount is set, so there's nothing, you're not complaining you're not paid enough because that's set. And so, the question is, because we had some confusion in the budget about a line item that made it whether you were part-time or full-time. And my understanding is what was in the budget or what we passed, right? We know what your amount is, and we're not going to disclose all that because it's a public meeting. But also, you have some, like your FICA, your social security, there's some other things that go in. So, the amount is actually higher than what your state salary is.
Right.
Because there's those extra compensations that the city has to apply. So, was what we passed wrong? And is that why you're upset?
She doesn't know how the amount was calculated. The amount budgeted is larger than the amount paid to her for the reasons you've mentioned. I would just take issue with one word, compensation. The taxes that the city has to pay because there is an employee is not compensation to the employee. That's between the city and the government.
But that's in the budget. We have to include that in the budget. I know she doesn't get it, but we have to budget for it.
No, she understands that completely. I think she took issue with the fact that people were alleging that she had a cell phone allowance or a car allowance, and they put that out in a public meeting. She just wants the record straight that the statutory amount and the amount this council approved is all she gets, and she's, that's why she provided you with the check stubs and the W-2s to show you that that's all she gets. And she wanted that on the record since there was confusion about whether she had other compensation, which she does not.
Ms. Julie, I didn't mean that you didn't get it. I meant that you don't get that money, that tax money. Yeah, I know you get it. You know better than anybody what you make, yeah.
I appreciate you coming to, you know, clarify, you know, the miscommunication by the administration on what you are getting paid or not getting paid. So, thank you.
Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.